Yeah, Laurie.
Okay, we're live.
All right, okay. Welcome to the Village of Irvington Planning Board Meeting of June 5th, 2024. Just a thought about tomorrow. Tomorrow is June 6th, the 80th Anniversary. B-Day for our allies, US, Britain and Canadian soldiers. Assaulted Normandy Beach. Something close to forty-five hundred never left that beach. So if you can remember tomorrow, give them a thought. Okay, I'll introduce the village attendees that we have Sarah Lemo, she's the gatekeeper on the. The Zoom, we have Ed Marin, our building inspector. Doug Han, the consultant engineer to the village. Mary Ann Stessis, the village attorney. Laurie Davidowitz is absent tonight. Then we have. Daniel Gellicott, I'm Caesar Manfredi, the chairman. And Mike Smith to my left, and Mike Mafuco is off tonight. So it's just three of us carrying war. Qualified for a war. Okay, the first order of business would be the minutes of May 1st, 2024. We have any comments on the minutes of May 1st?
No comments.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 1, 2024.
Second.
Will be favored.
All right.
None opposed, none opposed. Okay, the order for this evening's presentations will be number one. Two Roland Road. That's twenty twenty-four, obviously, number. Number two is Nine Meadow Way. Number three is Twenty-three Hillside Terrace. Number four is Three Deep Hollow Close. Number five is Eight West Sunnyside Lane. Number six is Eleven Dunham Place. Number eight is Ninety-one Riverview Road. Number nine is Eighty-four Fargo Lane. And number ten is Seventy-six North Broadway, sometimes called the Maxim property. Okay, let's start with number one, that's twenty twenty-four dash ten, Two Roland Road.
Good evening.
We hear you, we don't see you.
Uh, all right. Let me see if I can just share my screen. I don't know why that's happening, I apologize.
Long as we can see the screen, but you don't necessarily need to see your, that's not an insult.
Understood, bear with me one second, please, I'm trying to get myself together here. Can you see that?
We see things that say Hogan on it.
Damn it, I'm sorry, guys, I don't know what's happening.
Looks like a file, file index.
All right, let me try this again. I don't know. Okay, let me try again.
Six.
How about that?
Yes, good, we can see the.
Okay. I apologize, I don't know what's happening with my camera. Oh, here's, I got. All right. Starting over then. So this is Matthew Barron's, the architect representing the Hogan application at Two Well and Road. This is an application for legalization of an existing. Undocumented expansion of a pool patio. And also a modification and. Addition to the driveway. By adding this piece to it so that we can create a turnaround space and an easy way to get in and out of the property. I, we were at the May meeting, we were deferred to the planning, sorry, to the zoning board. They have granted the variance for coverage that was required. So we have got that taken care of and we are back with the planning board to. To move forward with our permit application for the driveway expansion. There were a few comments from the Han engineering team, we've addressed them. I have. Created the, just again, I'm going to try this, I don't know why this isn't working out, but. This is a drainage plan, is that being shared now?
No. Not yet.
Here we go, sorry.
Now it is.
Okay, thank you. So this is our new drainage plan. We're going to create a. A subsurface retention system, Coltech system, connected to a new. Catch basin that's at the low point of the driveway extension and. We. Are keeping it away from the side yard. I know there's been some sensitivity from the neighbors, I believe, to the east here on this side. So we wanted to keep this away from that side of the property. There are also a couple of trees on this side, so we wanted to keep the excavation for the retention system away from those trees.
Hold on one second.
Sure.
I added it with the building inspector. In relation to the possibility of drainage heading east, I guess. And he said the, you said the.
Yeah, the, your catch basin should be on the opposite side for the, on the low point, it's. You have it on, it's on the, on the other side is the low point.
On this side?
Yeah.
And then pipe it across the front of the, across the driveway back into this.
I don't know what happened, but it, it was in my memo, it's. I'll have to.
It's not in the memo.
We'll venture new memo tomorrow.
Yeah, I gotta reissue it, I don't, I don't know what happened, but it's, anyway, it should have been in there, it's, it's the opposite side.
Okay, understood. And that's not a problem, we'll, we'll put it on this side and we'll pipe it, again, this is the optimal location for the, for the retention system. So we are going to, you know, keep that here and then we'll, we'll, we'll put the catch basin on this side and we'll pipe it over from. I think there were also a couple of notes about a silt fence, which we'll provide along here and along here.
Yes.
Hold on.
Sorry.
Continuing on that catch basin. The east side is the low end of the driveway. Are you going to have enough pitch slope to get the water to go west into the Coltech?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll drop it down, I mean, it's, it's, this is the low point, but it's, it's fairly flat from here across. You can see by these contours between. I think that's one sixty-six to one sixty-eight across, you know, over thirty feet. So we've got enough pitch there, it's, it's fairly, it's fairly flat, so we can be able to get that across.
We'll come back with a quick step.
I want to take care of it.
I, I, I already fixed it in the memo. Me, I, I, I comment, yeah, he's going to reissue the memo and I changed the date to the, instead of June 3rd, my mother, June 5th memo.
Okay.
That's a.
Okay, I needed an aside to see if that could be fixed without you having to come back. Because it's relatively minor and straightforward, and it can be fixed without you coming back.
Right, thank you.
Okay, anything else you want to add?
I, I think that's basically it, I mentioned, I was saying, talking about. I will add the silt fences along this side here and also along this property line where we're going to do the excavation for the retention system.
Yeah. You got that? Doug, you got this?
Yeah.
It's so offensive. Yeah. Okay. All right, any question?
I have no questions.
Mike?
No questions.
Sarah, any questions from the Zoom?
Nobody's raising their hand to speak and there are no comments in the chat.
Any questions from the audience? No questions, okay. Mary Ann, do we have a resolution to approve?
Whereas in April 2024, Chris and Kim Hogan applied for site development plan approval to legalize an existing pool patio. Enlarge the driveway at their house at Two Roland Road. And whereas the patio exceeds coverage, it requires a variance, which was granted by the zoning board of appeals on May 21st. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in memorandum dated April 3rd, April 29th, and June 3rd. Listed a number of items, most of which were addressed in subsequent submissions. Suzanne Knowle and the village's landscape consultant reviewed the plans. Planning board held a public hearing on the application on April 3rd, May 1st, June 5th. The action, type-two action under secret and therefore requires no environmental review, now therefore be it resolved. That the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval. Of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Hogan Residence Prepared by Matthew Barron's Architect. And then the sheets are designated subject to, one, complying with the items in Hans June 5th memorandum, a reissued memorandum tonight. Two, showing continuous tree protection fencing along the west side of the new driveway pavement. So it's to completely encircle the trees to protect root zones from construction impacts and root compaction. And three, showing soil stockpile areas away from the root zones of existing trees, those last conditions were in Suzanne Knowle's memo.
All set?
Understood.
Any questions on the resolution from the board?
No questions.
No questions. Okay, I make a motion to approve the resolution as read.
Second.
All in favor?
I, I.
Any opposed? None opposed. Okay, we're all set, thank you very much. And make sure you get that catch basin switched.
Take care of it.
In the memorandum dated tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Today.
Today, today.
It's going to work late tonight.
We'll take care of it, thank you.
All right, number two. Twenty, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, Nine Meadow Way.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, James Crap representing for Lawrence Spitzer at Nine Meadow Way. We've been here a couple of times, as you're well aware. I can share my screen real, real quick, but not too much to bring to your attention.
In the interest of time, you might want to show us what you did differently from the last several meetings. That changes the, changes the, the situation with the flood plain.
Basically, the majority of work that was done between the last two iterations wasn't much architectural. It was mostly clarification on the flood storage plane. Which you can see here, updated work from Hudson. Clarified this and in conjunction with, working with Doug. Came to what I believe to be a resolution. There's no grading on the site, there's been no change to coverage of any kind, we basically just. Clarified the existing grades and made sure that everything was working and that our analysis was correct. Beyond that, not much has changed for the last two iterations, it's mostly just been trying to make sure that we're in sync with what the village needs.
It is my understanding that the interpretation of the floodplain elevation. Might have been revised, Ed, you want to, Doug?
Yeah, no, we clarified the floodplain elevation and. They made sure that they didn't encroach in it.
So the.
So we clarified, initially, the volume calculations. Needed to be revised, so they, they updated everything.
Okay. All right, so the floodplain is not impacted, yeah. Okay. You have anything else to add, Jim?
Nope.
Hello, Jim? James?
Oh, not, that's okay, I didn't know that there is another gym in the room. No, not at this time.
Dan, you have any questions?
I have no question.
Mike?
No question.
Sarah, any comments on Zoom?
Nobody's raising their hand to speak and there are no comments in the chat.
Anybody in person wish to comment on this Nine Meadow Way? No, no comment, okay, Mary Ann, you have a resolution?
Whereas in September 2023, Lawrence Spitzer applied for site development plan approval to build a two-story addition and garage on a property at Nine Meadow Way. And whereas the plan showed the proposed destruction would be located in a regulated floodplain and decrease the volume of the flood in the. The volume in the floodplain. And was Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in memorandum dated September 1st and December 4th, 2023, February 5th, March 4th, and April 26th. Twenty twenty-four listed a number of issues. And whereas Doug Han and the building inspector met with the applicants architect in an attempt to resolve the floodplain issues. And whereas the village's landscape consultant reviewed the plans and made recommendations which were addressed to her satisfaction in subsequent submission. Planning board held a public hearing on September 6th and December 6th, 2023, and February 7th, March 6th, May 1st, and June 3rd, 2024. And whereas the proposed construction will alter floodplain, so was reviewed for compliance with the flood damage prevention prevention of village code and is detailed in Hans June 3rd, 2024 memorandum was found to comply. And was proposed construction requires a freshwater wetlands permit. And is detailed in Hans June 3rd, 2024 memorandum, it meets the requirements for that permit. And whereas proposed construction requires a water, water courses permit. And is detailed in Hans June 3rd, 2024 memorandum, it meets the requirements for that permit. And was the action, it's type-two action under secret and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board issues floodplain, freshwater wetlands. And water bodies and water courses permits and grant site development plan approval. For the construction reflected in the drawings entitled proposed addition driveway and alterations Nine Meadow Way. And they're specified and there's no conditions.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann, that was a long one. At the five meetings. Okay, I make a motion to approve. The minutes, the resolution as approved, as read.
Second.
All in favor?
I, I.
Any opposed? None opposed. Okay, James, thank you very much, you certainly get the stuck, stick-to-it award. And I'm glad it worked eventually. I guess we'll see you in a little bit.
Item or two.
Sounds good, thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. That was number two, number three. Twenty oh eight dash forty-five is Twenty-three Hillside Terrace.
Well, this is John Malone Ferguson Malone Architecture. Representing the owners at Twenty-three Hillside. We're here for a revision to a site plan that is open from 2010, which I think I mentioned in the letter, it was. The process is in, the house is in the process of being sa- sold and during the title search, the indication that the. The CFO was never received. So in reviewing and trying to close out that open CFO, there were a few. Issues with what was on the planning board that had identified, and so we've revised drawings to indicate. Those changes that basically a portion of the driveway was never built. And in that same area, triangular portion of patio was put in place. In its, in its stead. So we've revised drawings that are associated with those differentials between the approved plan and what was actually built on site. And we're hoping to do what we need to do to expedite the project and get the CFO so that the sale can be completed.
You want to just bring up the site plan, John, if you can? You're out of town, right, so I don't know, can you operate and still do the same thing, so there you go.
Just a side thing.
This is the site plan and. So the changes from the approved site plan are limited to this triangular portion here of patio. And the, the widening of this patio here by two feet. Also, this bubble on this end indicates there was a, there was a walkway that was proposed to extend to this point that was never built. And here we are showing there's a retaining wall that was never included in the original survey for the project that was in a. You know, it was an original retaining wall associated with the house when it was built in the forties. And so that was added to the, to the drawings.
Okay, everything is, there's nothing proposed here, it's just, this is showing exactly what's there now.
Exactly what's there now, it's basically putting, bringing the site plan into conformance with the house built survey.
And everything is, meets code.
They're all covered because of the code change.
So they're okay with coverage?
No, they need to go to John's work.
So, they need to go to the ZBA. Okay. Any comments?
I have no comments.
No questions. Sarah, anything from the Zoom?
Nobody's raising their hand to speak and there are no comments in the chat.
Okay, anything in the audience?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here on this.
You have to come up and speak on microphone if you're here for this?
Sure.
My apologies. Identify yourself, it's for the transcript.
Of course.
I'm Steve Gutman. And my wife Carol lives here and my daughter Emily and my son-in-law Andrew are here. And they're the buyers on this property. And I just want to say, anything that can be done to expedite this, we greatly appreciate.
But we're going to carry it out.
I've heard my cause, I'm going to.
No comment that was received and Mary Ann, do we have a resolution?
Yeah.
In spite of the.
In November 2008, the planning board granted site development plan approval to Wendy Morgan and Gerard Haldula to construct. An addition to patio at their house, Twenty-three Hillside Terrace, and was this September twenty, two thousand nine, the planning board waived site plan approval for a pre-existing retaining wall on the property. And was the project, project was completed in June 2010. But a certificate of occupancy was never issued because of undocumented construction. And was in May 2024, applicants applied for certificate of occupancy. The building inspector found that there were a number of disparities from the approved site plan, including but not limited to. Enlarge patio, new walkway, additional retaining wall, reduced driveway. And that the additional construction exceeds permitted coverage. And whereas applicants have applied for revised site development plan approval. And was the planning board held a public hearing on June 5th, 2024, it's type-two action under secret and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application. For revised site development plan approval of the construction shown in the drawings entitled Morgan Haldula Residence Prepared by Ferguson Malone Architecture. Subject to receiving a variance from the ZBA for coverage.
Thank you. Okay, any questions on the resolution?
No questions.
I make a motion to approve the resolution as read.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
I, I.
Any opposed? None opposed, okay. Well set, John, thank you very much, where are you?
Copenhagen.
Oh, wow. Yes.
Dedicated. It's a little early in the morning, man.
Yeah, I gotta go to bed, guys, thank you though.
Would you set your alarm to get up at twelve?
Yeah. I'll talk to you guys soon.
Okay, thanks, John. Hey, you realize, as the resolution said, you still need a variance from the ZBA. And I don't know if John has scheduled that or will schedule it.
I hope so.
Okay.
But thank you very much.
Okay, moving right along. Three, four, we're going to twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, Two Deep Hollow Close.
Good evening.
Okay, you got your site plan?
I do. I think I've got my glitches worked out.
You know, I was reading something and I wasn't paying attention if you identified yourself.
I hadn't yet, I was waiting until you were finished, so I, this is Matthew Barron's, the architect representing the units residence to the Apollo Close. This is an application for a new hot tub. To be installed, it's, it is a freestanding self-contained hot tub. It's going to be installed on the, adjacent to the rear deck of the residence. Since we are exceeding coverage, the, the owners are going to remove part of the deck. In order to lessen the impact. When we were last here for the May meeting, it was brought to our attention that we. Did not include the gravel base that the hot tub will sit on as part of the coverage, so we have corrected that now, we are. Still a net decrease in coverage, but still over. What's allowable, so we have updated the drawings to reflect that. I've also, I will share this. But also. I gotta get to this thing now. There it is, sorry. Added a couple of details about the existing fence. Which are all compliant with New York State Code requirements for pool surround. We've also added a couple of notes and details. About the barrier wall of the residence that leads out to the deck to show compliance with the barrier requirements. There was a note from the landscape architect about. The fence. And showing its compliance, so this is a photograph, I thought I had submitted it as part of the package, but this is the photograph of that existing fence and the stolen wall. That surrounds the rear of the property. To show compliance with the, with the, with the fence requirements.
It's not, it's not clear how far. How far, I guess that's to the west, how far that fence goes.
Yeah, I'll show you in one sec, I can.
That, yes. That fence doesn't meet state code.
Can you say that again, Ed, sorry?
Bring those photographs into the office, we'll talk about it, you, you have issues with the state code for climbability of the wall.
Yes, right, because the opposite side is, is less than four feet. And I, I do want to talk to you about that, I think we might have to go to Albany for a variance, I think it just didn't.
We won't, you, you can't get a variance for that.
All right. Then we'll, we'll talk offline, thank you. So this is the extent of the stolen wall and the fence here, so the fence butts into that stone wall, which is the photograph that I showed earlier. And it does wrap all the way around the rear of the property. And then it connects with this other fence, which is the one over here that I'm showing as Gate Zero One. So it, it provides a full enclosure, I'm not discounting what Ed is saying, it does not comply in the sense that. The opposite side of the wall does not exceed four feet. But I think we, we may be, have to find a creative way to get, to get compliance with that requirement. That said, know that we are over the coverage and do need to go to the zoning board to get that variance.
Okay, but there was another issue regarding the fence that does not relate to the pool. It was the screening to the north that the landscape architect asked for.
Right.
Previous meeting, which was not, not provided last time. And far as I can see, is not provided this time.
No, it, that was the photograph I just showed, that, that provided the screening.
But it, it, it's not clear that it does, it, it, it wasn't comprehensive enough, it's, it's sort of stopped in the middle of a section of the fence and. You're going to need to do better to see if it satisfies. Aside from the issue of, of satisfying the pool protection. You, you, you're going to need more photographs to show us that it's satisfying the screenings required to the north. Just from that picture, it appears that it's not doing that, but it's hard to tell. So as part of the process of resubmitting. So as part of the process of resubmitting. Uh, you need to address that. To make sure that our landscape architect architect is satisfied with the screening. Of the area to the north. Okay?
Okay, this is the north wall and the north side of the fence, though.
I know, but it's 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 just two and a half sections of fence, I I don't know where the fence stops, I don't know if it goes further west. Uh, to to satisfy our landscape architect. Uh, for the screening effect on the hot tubs. Uh, so you you have half the information, in my opinion, uh, that was requested. In terms of necessary screening.
So this is the stockade fence, six feet high stockade fence. That goes across that north side of the property and butts into that wall.
To make, uh, is that? No, that could, that could satisfy this. Uh, show the review at the same time as Ed is reviewing the uh, if it's satisfactory to meet the. Pool safety fence uh standards. Okay, you need to come back to the pool fence anyway, so. Anything else, uh, you got anything else to offer?
Nope.
Okay, you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Right?
I just want to clarify something, uh, Ed. Uh, Matt had said something about a four foot height requirement and you had said that Irvington.
So the state code has a four foot pool barrier requirement. Um, but Irvington has a five foot fence requirement, not a full code requirement walls. These requests for estate variances. That's it's possible in too many locations and we have to actually approve. The application for a variance, so we can't. Life safety on the pool is probably paramount, so it's not gonna happen. Even the stockade fence is climbable according to the state code because you don't have forty inches in between. The bars where they step. And then you have more than a four inch opening on the bar. There's a few things.
I just, I just read some local news that two children drowned in the pool.
It's not something we.
It was in the last week. Take this very seriously. Okay, uh, I asked you if you had any questions, right?
Correct, yeah.
Sarah, any uh questions from the public on the Zoom?
Nobody's raising their hand to speak and there are no comments in the chat.
Alright, we're, we're okay with you going to the ZBA to get your variance, assuming you get it. And then come back with the proper. With the engineering satisfied as to the fence. And Suzanne Nolan satisfied us to the screening.
Okay, and uh, I'll stop by and have a conversation with Ed about how we um, how we can address this.
Yeah, and leave off the pictures and what you just showed me. And that the arborist can. Be satisfied that the screening meets what she wanted.
Okay. Will do.
Okay, thank you. And we'll see you, uh, assuming the ZBA gives you the various, we'll see you uh another time.
Okay, so where we are referred to the zoning board then?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I I don't do the referral, you you, we're okay with you going there.
Alright, thanks. Have a good night.
I just broke my glasses. What do you call these things, templates? The arms? Well, we'll say. Number five, uh, twenty twenty four dash twelve. Eight West Sunnyside Lane.
Um, hello, it's Nile Kane, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Yep, okay, good, um, yeah, so I'm the architect for Michael Hadad and Diana Hadad. And this is an application that was before you last month for a detached garage with an attached. Greenhouse and a little pergola structure along the west side of the um. The um. Uh, no, east side of the house, let me try to share my screen now.
We're not seeing you, but uh, it was only we can see you.
You don't need to. Why is it not?
We see your.
Yeah, I didn't open it right away, why don't you see me? Again, it doesn't matter, but strange. Um, maybe it's just my. This is a notebook computer I'm not used to using, to be honest, but you're okay without seeing me, I guess, anyway. So we were before you before, and I guess you, do you want me to just? Go through the 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 sort of salient points of the um comments?
Yes.
Because, I mean. Well, again, this is the, this is the detached garage here, and we have the pergola structure along the east side of it.
You have to plan out.
I don't?
There's you clicked on it, but it's not coming up.
It's up on my screen.
Not sharing, then you may have to stop sharing and then share the PDF.
Oh, stop, share. And then share again.
Yeah.
Darn it, this is not, not familiar with this, okay, here we go. Set up?
There you go.
There you go.
Weird, I don't even know what I did different, anyway, um. So yeah, so we have, um, you know, we're, we're, we're keeping within the thirty uh foot uh aqueduct setback as required, I think we discussed that last time. I think the principal comment last time was uh just ensuring that the view preservation um. Was um adhered to the the view. And um. I have some new photographs. As far as that goes, this is a diagram, this precise diagram of the coverage that we did not include last time, although the coverage was calculated. Um, this drawing, it shows luckily enough, the client had a copy of the existing stormwater management system, which is, which is perfect, and there's no. Stormwater, existing stormwater issues in terms of runoff or anything like that. And we have a perk test that was done, um, certifying that the perk test is good, it's better than I had assumed. Eighteen point two minutes, so we are good with that, with the the design, in fact, we kept the design the same, so it's the overcapacity actually. Based on the perk test we we obtained. Um, this drawing you saw before, nothing has changed, well, slight change here to the stairs, the way the stair approached very minor. Which affects the the overage. Uh, we're over by about ninety eight square feet, so we are aware we have to go to the zoning board for that. And let me show you these. Um, this is a along the aqueduct, we've done a little diagram of the bulk of the building. There's really no way any, just because it is on the east side of this house and the house is larger, there really are no, there really is no opportunity for any view. Being blocked, uh, this is from the corner, sort of near the uh, uh, southern property, I'm not sure what address that is. Uh, and the corner of the aqueduct. Whoops. And this is looking directly across from that uh property to the south, just the the volume of the uh. Of of the garage. Uh, and then I have a series of photographs along the aqueduct, all of which sort of illustrate. The same thing without the that wire diagram.
Hold that picture. Go back to that picture.
Okay.
One just before this. If you had a wired diagram.
Well, it's the the um, the garage is way back here.
Yeah, I know. And if you had a wired diagram there, we could better.
Even the picture just before this one.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, well, I mean, the wire diagram I showed was just, just, just very close to that.
I know, but it's not.
It's one in between, Nile.
Go back.
This one.
Yes, this one.
It appears that if you were to put the wire diagram right there, that. The view preservation would be satisfied, but it's not there.
Oh, yeah, but it's, yeah, but it's right, it's just the, it's very virtually the same, it's it's this one. Very close to the, well, it's not exactly, nothing, but that's, that's the, that was the one right there, sorry, it's bouncing around a little bit.
That's, it's not the same.
Well, I know it's not exactly the same, it could, there could be millions of images that wouldn't be exactly the same, but this is, this shows that. There's no view being blocked.
Well, this is a weighted voting system. And you go back to another picture.
One more.
One more.
Oh.
That one, no, go back. Go back. That picture, if you were to. Go forward. That picture. If you were to place. The simulated or the rendering of the garage. In that picture, like you placed it in the other pictures. We would be very happy.
Okay, I'm not sure what it would show, I mean, there's no view here.
Well, if you.
There's no view to block.
Well, I don't know, you 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 put the rendering of the garages in the other pictures. With no issue, and I'm not sure why you're resisting.
Well, I just wanted to be comprehensive about every, I I mean, I could do a hundred along here, you understand, right, I mean, it could do many photographs, this shows the same exact.
We're already talking about this one photograph. And to add the rendering that you already rent, added to the other photographs that.
Right, so. This shows everything that that other photograph shows.
No, it doesn't.
It's not a direct east to west view.
Yeah, that's it. Oh, come on. Well, I I'd shown all these, I I submitted all these quite a while ago, actually, but yeah.
I'll, let's move, let's move on, if time can hold you up.
Okay.
Make sure you know which picture we want to see.
Okay, um.
Got it fixed in your head which picture we want to see the.
Yeah, I'm sure, it was. Yeah, no, I had this.
Go back to the pictures, let's confirm you know which picture we want.
This one because. She said that one too, at some point, but this, yeah. Oh, okay, yeah, okay. Um, yeah, I can show that, and then um. Yeah, so that was the main thing, there were some minor comments, say, we we removed a a an ornamental grass that was. It's sort of not appropriate and and put in a new plant, li- leocotho, which is a, a uh. A um. Plant, the local to the area. And um. And we put some tree protection in that was mentioned last time, there's a tree protection uh. Indicated and for that large tree. Right there, protection. Um, and that was, that was about it, I mean, we, like I said, there's some adjustments to the area calculation, but it. Amounts to the same thing, we still have to go back for zoning variance for that.
Now, I have notes here, Ed, and Doug, that um, the far and coverage needed to be fixed.
Oh, they did it.
Yeah, we, we sorry, we revised, yeah, we, well, I showed you.
The soil. Pile storage.
The F A R diagrams are here.
Go back to the, go back one more.
Over to back.
You got a storage that's circled in the middle of the driving, that the soil storage temporary.
Yeah.
That, well, if if you put that there, how are you gonna get back to work on the garage?
Oh, well, I'm sure that was towards, because they'll be excavating, they'll be piling it there and and then removing it. They're not gonna be working on the garage with a big pile of dirt on the, on the, on the uh ground. So this, this is, this area needs to be excavated in order to even start the construction.
So you excavate it, put the pile in the middle of the driveway, and how are you gonna get back to build the garage?
Again, you're gonna remove it from the site.
Well, you're gonna remove it from the site, okay. Is there sequencing, Doug, to satisfy that?
Um, I believe, I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, we showed the sequence, a little list of sequencing, the sort of standard in terms of the construction sequence. And we showed a little pretreatment tank, I think I mentioned that last time, but it was one of the comments, just like a, it's catch basin, but sort of better than a catch basin, because you can. Pull crap out of it easily.
Uh, there was, there was one thing that um Suzanne had about the tree, the fifty. Fifty four uh radius.
Yeah, that's this one, we have fifty four inch protection around it.
So it's not a fifty four inch, she she said the root, the uh, the radius is fifty four feet. Critical root zone.
Oh, I don't know. Just make sure it has tree protection.
Yeah, street tree protection is there to be done per, 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 per code, per, you know, as as required.
The landscape architect for the village is looking for a little bit, something more substantial. For root zone protection, Nile, see what you can bring to us.
Yeah, she she said it's a fifty four foot radius, not fifty four inches.
The excavation, the excavation of this garage is in the critical roots of of the tree. And there needs to be some work about when you cut the roots. With, to put the garage in the ground, what does that do to the tree? Okay?
Um, yeah, okay, we can look into that, that's uh. It's gotta be more than, it's probably very close, twenty five, because it's fifty foot radius, right, so it's twenty five feet.
Oh, no, radius, not diameter.
Alright.
Nile, Nile, make an appointment with me either tomorrow afternoon or Friday, bring the plan in, we'll work on it together, okay?
Okay, okay, we can do that. Um, now.
And let's make sure that the the construction sequencing is.
I'll make sure, I I will, I'll sit down with them, make sure that they're they're small items, but they're, they're not going through.
The contractor doesn't stop piling the soil.
Yeah.
On the aqueduct.
I can see that happen.
No, well, we're all within, clear within the thirty foot re- setback requirement. In terms of any, any construction. Yeah, okay, and then we do need to get the zoning variance, can we go forward for that with that?
Yeah.
It's a mi- very minor, actually, but it's just, in fact, you know, there's, there's uh, it's it's. There's a little tree house that is a hundred and twelve square feet, that sort of triggers the. The zoning variance need, and then there's a. You know, some other paving and paths, so there's no, no huge bulk of the house that is, uh, we're trying to get a variance for, basically.
Well, that's up to the ZBA, uh.
Yeah, I know, I just, but it's sort of pertinent to the the. Planning board as well, in terms of the appropriateness of the scale and all that sort of thing.
Yeah, you can go to the ZBA and come back with the uh. With the things that we ask or uh the additional rendering. On that picture.
Yeah, we can add a wire diagram to that photograph and then just look at the tree protection issue.
We can't both be speaking at the same time. Because when you read uh the uh transcript, it merely says voiceover. So nothing counts while two people are talking. So I was trying to summarize for you, so you don't come back with something missing. You need to fix the soil, make sure the soil pile is sequenced so that the contractor doesn't dump it on the aqueduct. You need to have the arborists talk about the roots that are gonna be cut when you put the garage in the ground. And you need to come back with that picture that was clearly identified with the rendering. Uh, of the uh, of the, of the uh, new garage. Did I leave anything out? I don't think so, no. Okay. Any other questions?
I have no further questions.
No questions. Any questions from Zoom?
Um, nobody's raising their hand to speak and there are no comments in the chat.
Okay, I think you have your assignments and your homework. And see you after you. Eddie will see you after you go to the ZBA, and if we do, uh, please come back with what we ask for.
Yeah, okay, alright, thank you. Absolutely absurd.
Alright, we're on number six, twenty twenty three dash twelve, eleven Dunham Place.
Hello again. Can you hear me? Yep, we're all set. We're good, no, no, no more hot mics, okay? Uh, just making sure. Um, yeah, so this is, uh, again.
What'd you say before you got on?
No, I've been here enough, I know better season. Um, uh. So, a- again, this is eleven Dunham Place, is James Craft from Studio Park, representing Jared and Erica Maltz. Um, we've been before you several times, uh, again, trying to uh clarify. Our wetlands, floodplain and watercourses. Um, for proposed addition on this property. Um, we've gone back and forth several times, I can take you towards the the minor changes that we made and clarifications we made from the last iteration of this. Um, that I believe has satisfied the bulk of the comments that remain, uh, there's still one comment, obviously, we. Uh, there's still one comment, obviously, we need to get a variance. Our main goal is to get a minor coverage variance, and we hope to go to the Z B A after this evening. And we've also have a couple of comments, uh, from, uh, Ms. Nolan, uh, regarding, um, a tree information and some other protection details that we need to deal with. We have an arborist on retainer now, that's been noted. Um, and we plan after going to Z B A, coming back to you with, uh, those couple of minor, uh, items that she has noted as well. Um, but for now, I can show you what we've, uh, updated from the latest iteration. Um.
Important point is, you've been here, uh, three or four meetings, and it'd be great to articulate, and we weren't happy with the presentation, not the, the presentation, that it didn't satisfy the needs of the floodplain. So concentrate on why, what changes have we made that this is now okay? When the previous four meetings, it was not okay.
Sure. So the bulk of the issue had to do with a, any change to the floodplain period, uh, any, uh, grade changes being proposed on the property. Uh, now presently, there are no proposed grade changes of any kind being done. Um, so that doesn't necessarily change the bulk flood storage. Um, in fact, it is reduced because we are opening up the garage, um, which has been, uh, noted. Um, the other clarification that we did was, um, again, there's been a lot of back and forth about what is, uh, what is deemed, uh, the floodplain elevation. Um, and through the, uh, through interpolation, uh, we've determined what that height is. Um, and we have in the latest iteration, uh, raised our proposed construction addition and additional nine inches to get us above, uh, the level uh, that's needed, which you can see mostly here. So, uh, and this is a drawing from Hudson, uh, supposed to be the proposed addition uh, one point seven five feet. Because this is kind of the um, this is two hundred forty-five, uh, floodline, is the um, and from this side to this side, although this isn't reality, we made a determination that if we are, are up to, uh, two forty would be above be required by FEMA, um, so we extra inches, so that we're now two, two five. Both made was clarification on additional spot elevations. There is a discrepancy actions, uh, around a part of that being around um, survey information, and noted that on our plans to, um, to bring to, uh, Doug and the, of the grade is, um, around the building. That's those changes that you see here, like clarifying grade at the proposed garage, clarifying grade at the existing, um, entryway. Uh, and then changing the proposed elevation of our one hundred and forty square foot proposed addition out to the rear. Um, above and beyond that, the other changes, my, only just clarifications uh, or, or reconciling some of the questions that, uh, Susan had in her last comments, like clarifying, uh, specifically or say that again, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought somebody asked a question I didn't hear. Um.
Got the door, the door open.
Oh, okay, um, and then one other thing that we clarified, we clarified the construction path. That's on another page. That was a question from Susan. Um, and we clarified a proposed replacement for a tree that has to be removed for the altered driveway, which is these, uh, proposed two new dogwoods. Um, and again, as we said, we know that we still have to go to the Z B A to get a coverage, uh, potentially get a coverage variance and then come back to you. Um, but I believe based upon the report that we got, um, we've satisfied and complied with all the other, uh, wetlands, water courses, and floodplain requirements as of now. So that's what we changed in the last iteration, or last two iterations.
Is the shed gone or proposed to be gone?
Proposed to be gone. It exists right now.
And you, you, uh, there are several comments from Suzanne regarding plantings, um, which we, um, we allowed not to get done until we s- so we could make sure that, uh, before you made that expense, that the floodplain is satisfied, which was a limiting factor. Um, so that, Ed, Doug, we're okay?
Uh, engineering wise, yeah.
And let the record show Ed nodded, yes.
I'm sorry, yes.
I'll take, I, I appreciate.
Okay, we're, we're okay.
We're intimate with the project at this point.
We're okay with going to the Z. Uh, and you need, after, assuming you get their approval, uh, we'll see you back here. Uh, to any, any, any more comments from Doug. And, uh, certainly, uh, making sure that Suzanne's, uh, uh, tree and shrub, uh, questions are all answered. Which you know what they are, right? Correct?
Yes, and I spoke with her in the last iteration, and the only reason why they haven't been resolved is just we want to go to the Z B A and then we'll bring in our arborist and come back with whatever anybody needs.
So we, we wanted to hold off on the course of doing that until the Z B A, so it was ready for the Z B A.
Yes.
But that's okay. Uh. Okay, any comments?
I have no comments.
No questions. Sarah, anything from the Zoom?
Nobody's raising their hand to speak, and there are no comments in the chat.
Anybody in the auditorium wish to comment? No. Okay, thank you, uh, and, uh, after the Z B A, I hope to see you, uh, get this all squared away.
Maybe one last.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good evening. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. That's number seven, twenty twenty dash zero six, two Heritage Hill Road. Can't believe my glasses broke.
Oh, no. Well, at least they broke, there's a stand you can hold it up. Yeah.
Does it screw come out? It's just snapped, plastic, yeah. Yeah. It's not, if it was a screw, I could put it back in.
I don't do it.
Not from this.
Good evening. Um, I would like to share a screen, if that's okay?
I would like you to identify yourself.
Uh, Patty Steinschneider from Gotham Design, um, working with the bins on, uh, the renovations and alterations to their house. And, um, lots of other stuff with it. Um, let's see. Beginning is always a good place to start. Um, I think at the last meeting, uh, can you see the screen?
Yes, we see the house.
But, um, at the last meeting, I think there was, you know, we, we didn't do a good job of, uh, explaining the numbers. Um, so, uh, the first thing I did is I kind of went through everything going back to the origins. So this summary, I think, is accurate. Um, the variance that was granted by the Z B A based on what was applied for is six thousand seventy-six square feet. The initial planning board approval in August twenty twenty was for six thousand three square feet. We then went back for a revised site plan, uh, from the planning board in May of twenty, you know, twenty twenty-two. That was six thousand forty-seven square feet. Um, and the as-built right now, without the hot tub and the terrace, is six thousand thirty-seven. Um, we've got, uh, two things that the, the, that are existing on the site at this moment. One is the stone terrace, which including the stone, uh, and the gravel is, has an area of four hundred sixty-nine square feet. And the other is the hot tub, including the stairs, gravel, and the tub itself is two eighty-six. So the currently requested coverage is six thousand seven ninety-two, which I think gets us pretty quickly to the Z B A. Um, just to make sure everybody's aware where I got those numbers, this is the sheet that was submitted to the zoning board. It shows the six oh seventy-six. Here's the, uh, application which shows the six zero seventy-six, um, and as well as the notice. And then this, this is where it got a little interesting. The, uh, approval or the letter confirming the, um, variance granted does not say a number. It refers to, um, the board is satisfied and it, you know, the variance request is modest in size, representing about five percent over the allowable coverage, which is not mathematically correct for what was, uh, ever considered on it. It's, it was closer to ten percent. Um, so that's where we are with the numbers. I don't know if it makes a difference, because what we need is a new variance as far as I understand it. Um, this is the drawing that we've submitted. We've corrected the numbers. I think we now are good with, with all of those numbers again. Um, it's, you know, the total we're seeking is six thousand seven ninety-two. We've got that broken down, what it consists of, and that's the number that's shown on our data sheet. Um, the two things we're looking for approvals are for the, uh, the terrace itself, which wraps around the house, and we've included the gravel that, uh, kind of fills in between the walkway and the stone. We've included that as coverage. Um, the other is, of course, the hot tub itself, uh, which sits on a gravel bed, which we have included all of the, that information. Um, these were the drawings that we submitted that showed the fencing, the, the doors that latch and all that. Um, and I, you know, I did get, uh, Han Engineering's memo, um, which I would say really has two things. One is, uh, that we need to go to the zoning board, and then the other is that we've got to submit a complete, um, submission for the hot tub being treated effectively as a pool, showing how we're going to, um, you know, get rid of water to empty it out, where that's going to go, which will be into the cul-de-sac units we've got by the garage with a hose. So we've got answers on all that. We have not produced that sheet yet. Um, and it will take some time and energy to put that together, and not having the variance on that makes it kind of like, do you want us to do that first, or do we, can we go to the Z B A? And I think that's pretty much everything that I think we need, we don't, I don't think we need to talk about the fence, so you know, the other fence, so I think, uh, that's basically it for what the issue is at the moment, as far as I understand it.
Okay, uh, and you're okay with the number?
That's correct.
Six, six thousand seven hundred ninety-two. That's what's there now.
That's what's there.
And what was previously approved was six thousand and three.
Yes.
More or less.
Previous, previous.
Yeah, so they're looking for a variance between those two numbers.
Yes.
And there are other things my notes say that you need to do, uh, in addition to what you said you need to do. Uh, there's some screening that our landscape architect pointed out.
Yep.
Uh, drainage issues that need to be worked out.
Yeah, the, the drainage issues, I brought that up to Michael Stein. I've asked him to take a look at the site. Um, what we've got and how that compares. I mean, the obvious challenge is that none of the water that's coming from these two uh, additions are, at this point, something that would be getting picked up, so I want him to tell us whether we need to do that, and if we do, can we put it into the system we have? I'm going to defer to him on it. He knows a lot more about that than I do.
Okay, uh, and I, I, I have a comment about trees, you know, the screening and the trees issues, you should check, check face with Suzanne Nolan. Uh, when you come back.
Yeah.
And, and because there's, as we said in many cases, because there's costs involved, not knowing what the Z B A is going to be doing and extending costs, uh, we're okay with you going to the Z B A, uh, for the, uh, for the variance between six thousand and three and six, and what's there now, which is six thousand seven hundred ninety-two, uh, which is about twenty-three percent over, Doug?
Yep.
That's right, yeah. Right, um, so, yeah, why don't you do that? Uh, but when you come back, assuming the Z B A approves it, when you come back, you need to address these other things that we just discussed.
Absolutely.
Okay? And I have to say that when you said, uh, when you opened your remarks about the, uh, less than accurate, uh, description, that was certainly an understatement. But the first time you tried to describe this. Okay, any questions, Sam?
I have none.
Michael?
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
Around this hot tub, is there fencing required?
Yes. Go bring the, bring the, uh, drawing up, the, uh, site line. Yep, so it's like a, um, English garden type fence, it's a bright tide against the, uh, run your cursor around the fence, see, uh, Patty.
Yes.
Right there.
So that's offensive, hasn't been built yet.
Not correct.
So number included in the six thousand seven hundred.
The patio gravel under it is included in it.
Okay.
Okay, Mike?
Yep. No further questions.
Any questions, Sarah, in the Zoom?
Nobody's raising their hand to speak, and there are no comments in the chat.
Any questions from the audience? Charlotte, you're, you're here, you're you're gonna
Just excited to maybe finally close this chat after nearly five years.
Well, it was not five years.
Not here, just the whole thing. During a pandemic, all the rest.
Okay. I think we're set. You can, uh, go to Z B A and assuming they approve it, come back with what we asked for.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Okay. So maybe nine or eight, so seven, number eight. Uh, twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, that's ninety-one Riverview Road.
If you're here to represent the application, can you please hit the raise hand button?
What? Thank you. Mike?
What I lost, it is just not the correct way of saying. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, David Barbuti, Architect, representing Mr. and Mrs. Adler, uh, for a new two-car attached garage at ninety-one Riverview Road. Um, I'd like to share my screen if possible.
Yes.
That would be a great idea.
And you see that?
No.
No.
Appears to be a common problem today. How about now?
Yep, got it.
Why?
See, they have a stop one. Uh, on the, on the
Every time my dog looks a little funny to you. School.
So if everyone can see it, I can proceed?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so as I mentioned, it is a new two-car attached, uh, garage at the lower level. Uh, it is four hundred and thirty-seven square feet. Uh, it's at the lower level or at an existing garage level. Um, the proposed addition will match the appearance of the existing garage. Uh, we'll have a wood roof deck on top of it. There is some minor driveway modifications that are required. Um, we had a stormwater, uh, plan provided by or prepared by, um, Michael McGarvey, um, which basically covers all of the additional impervious surfaces. Um, and I am in receipt of Han Engineering's comments uh, that I received yesterday. And it's, you know, some housekeeping items that we need to clarify. So if the board has any questions, be more than happy to address.
Well, I'll start off with an easy one. Um, up in the, uh, northwest corner, there, there's a shed, a structure and a patio.
Correct.
With me?
Yes, I am.
That looks, it's on village property.
So, um, I received from the owner, which I believe he forwarded to Sarah this evening, um, from May thirteenth of nineteen ninety-two, that basically says that property is not village property anymore, and it is, belongs to the owners that have bought it. Um, and that came from Kevin Plunkett, via Steve McCabe from nineteen ninety-two. And that'd be more than And I'd be more than happy on our next submission to provide it. Uh, but from what I understand, those structures were there when the Adlers purchased the property about four, over forty years ago.
But the, if it's not the village property, it's still not your property.
Um. Correspondent.
We're not gonna approve it when it's sitting there and lending credibility to. A structure that's not on your property.
No, didn't he just say that the letter said that it was?
It says it's not the village property, but there's no.
No, it said it was a budding property. Well, maybe he's the abiding property.
Oh, yeah.
I, I haven't seen that letter. Let me look at the, let me look at the letter.
Whether or not it's, it's somebody else.
You didn't include the lot size in your calculation, did you? The additional lot?
I didn't get that.
Because this was just something.
Yeah.
So this, so I did not because this was a comment that was raised by. Um, Han Engineering, I believe. And I had just gotten this document.
Okay, let's, let's, uh, let's work on it. We'll see.
David, can I ask you, when you say a budding property, do you mean your property?
Yes.
Okay, okay, but let me, let me review the um, uh, the, the letter from Plunkett. I, I have not seen it.
Well, we need verification then.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look at it.
Right, right.
It's, it's okay with this.
Well, I think he's saying it's him, but we'll see.
Okay.
Uh, let me see what the letter says.
Like I said, that was the easy.
Well, so that's right, right. So, so you know, that came up. I was on, I was unaware. I thought that was just part of the survey that was prepared. Um, and it was, you know. When Merit did the survey, they just included it because it appeared to be part of this parcel. I didn't think twice about it. Um. So with that said, um, you know, as I said, Han Engineering provided, you know, several comments as well as the landscape consultant. And, you know, as I said, we have a little bit of um. Core nation and some, you know, housekeeping that we need to provide. Um, but what I would like is if at all possible, if we can move forward to the ZBA. Because unfortunately, the way the code is written, uh, the one F twenty only permits. Two gar, two cars, I believe it is garaged on the property. So I'm not quite sure how it means garage, uh, but that's. Two-two-four dash fourteen for off-street parking. Um. So does that mean you can only have two cars in the garage for the parcel or? Cars parked onsite don't matter? I'm not quite sure. So, I mean, I'm trying to get the cars off the driveway is, is basically what the client is looking for.
You need, it needs, you're limited to two garages and you want four, which is not in the code.
No, I understand that. So that's a variant.
Well.
We have to resolve the coverage also because we're not sure if that lot's included, not included. The shed and deck on that. Parcel that's in question. Isn't included in the coverage. And then there's some walls. We need to break down to see where what walls, patio stoops and walks. Are included and not included in coverage. One of our requirements in the coverage check sheet says provided coverage breakdown. Your coverage breakdown was um. Included a lot of um. You didn't have like the retaining walls and stuff like that and but it was.
Steps.
The step.
Steer landing.
Yeah.
Now we have to look at it for another.
And then we may or may not have to look at it for the additional. Lot question.
Okay. All right, so.
Happy with me with you.
No, no, I understand, uh, but I think. I thought we had included everything, but apparently. It's not shaded. The retaining walls aren't shaded, but I believe I included it on my calc, but I'll go back.
Maybe break it down a little more individual.
Okay.
All right.
Do, do, do you have an elevation views of what this is gonna look like?
Yes. So if you could see that, I've got the. Uh, I believe that's the west side elevation showing the two existing garage doors. And uh, the two proposed garage doors. Uh, the existing garage sit on, sits underneath a. Uh, a enclosed porch with a uh railing atop of that. Um, so the proposal was to do the same uh. Uh, exterior finishes and on top of the proposed garage to have a roof deck with uh the same matching railings. And from.
I don't know, it's, 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 it's a big stretch, um. I, I would like to see some, you mentioned, well, there's a lot of cars, I mean. Why do you need four garages? I mean. It's out of character with the neighborhood.
Um, I believe.
Are there any other three garages in the neighborhood?
I believe that around the corner, um, like, do you have the uh? My client sent me a text this morning, uh, that there is, when he goes for a walk, there is a house with. A two-car garage that is tandem, which has four. And then there is an additional three-car garage to that. And I think it's in close proximity to this.
Now, if you could uh come up with the locations.
Um, sure, let me. Let's get you.
I mean, obviously, the, the, the people who did, the trustees or doers, the uh zoning. Had a something in mind when they limited it to two garages. And, and with that in mind. But why, why four when the intent was two? The character of the neighborhood changes. And one of our charges as a planning board is to be consistent with the characters of the neighborhood.
Right, so there is a five-car garage in which.
Why don't you do a study for us and provide it next month?
Yeah.
Okay. So you wanna study of the neighborhood with?
Take the green bird map and I put fives, twos, ones on every prop, on every house.
Okay, perfect.
Let's see how this fits in with the character of the neighborhood.
Okay.
We're not comfortable with the ZBA until we're satisfied.
Okay.
Anything else? You got that covered, Doug?
Uh, yeah, coverage, F A R. It's, it's all on there, David. If you have a question, you can call me.
No, no, I read through, I, I read through it and. We'll take care of what we need to take care of.
And, and the stormwater, is that in a good location? I, we, we discussed that.
Yeah, the, you, in there, the um, you need a ten-foot setback from the, uh, what is that, the order property line, I think it was.
Bring up the uh sightline. Uh, identify your uh subsurface disposal.
So. For some reason, it's not on this, but I believe it's right where my cursor is. It's up in the back.
One there and then you had one on the other side in the driveway there. The one on the driveway side was um. Just a few feet from the properly, property line, you need ten feet.
Is it ten or five? I thought it was ten to the structure and five to the property line.
Uh, ten for both.
Is it D E C changed it? Okay. Not a problem. I'll have Mike work on that and make his changes. Okay, anything else?
Uh, no, let me uh. Check the rest of the board, Dan.
No, I think we mentioned everything.
Right. So in addition, the elevation doesn't really do much for me. So if you could. If you could show the proposed addition on actual photographs of. The house so that we can see what it would look like, not only in relation to the. House, but perhaps to the neighboring properties. That would be helpful.
Okay.
Is, is there, is there screening between these garages and, and the property to the west?
Uh, there is existing landscaping. Along the west property line. Exists, there exists, it's evergreens.
I think Mike raised a good question if he could have photographs of what this is gonna look like.
Okay. Okay.
Right. Thank you very much.
I'm more of a would like.
I'm getting to it. Uh, Sarah, do you have any uh? Comment in Zoom?
Um, the, the only person that has their hand raised is the homeowner.
Oh, hi, this is Mitch Adler. Is it okay if I speak now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I won't take a lot of time. I just wanna answer some of the questions that were raised. With regards to where you, what, if it's screened, it is screened. This will only be visible if you're standing at the e, edge of the driveway, looking right onto the property. Probably not be visible from any of the surrounding properties. With regards to that shed. That area, that easement is totally fenced in part of my property. It's been like that since we've owned the property. And that shed was there when we did our other addition. Which is really matching this one. It's symmetrical in the backyard and there was no issue raised about the shed or that property then.
It wasn't represented on that survey in that file. I took a look at it.
Okay. But again, that, that property is, I, I, I assume that that's ours by adverse possession and probably was even like that when we bought the property. There's no access to that from anywhere except our property. It's all fenced in, part of our property.
Can't get it. You can't get adverse possession against the municipality, so it wouldn't have been by adverse possession.
And, and, and my understanding of it, you, you, you need to go to a court and get it. You, you just don't sue it.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's different than adverse possession of that neighboring property. There's not a municipality.
Okay, even though the, the municipality disclaimed ownership in nineteen ninety-two?
That's it, that's, that's not the same as adverse possession.
Okay. All right, I, I won't take up more time about that. I just wanted to comment. Thank you for considering this application.
Welcome. We'll see you um next time.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations, verification on the property. Uh, and on um. It's a bunch of photographs from the street, uh, what it looks like, uh, from a photographic point of view and from the side. And uh. We can pencil in what the uh two new garages would look adjacent on the photograph. You were watching when there was renderings for the uh, in a previous application where they. Rendered what it looked like.
Yes.
From a photo. Yeah, okay. Anything, anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Okay, you will have uh. Your um. Homework to do and we'll see you when you're ready to come back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. And the next one is twenty twenty-four dash sixteen eighty-four Fargo Lane.
Hello, everyone. My name is Peter Altamare. I'm at Michael Lewis Architects. I'm here to represent um Heather Morris and Matt McCarthy, the owners of the property at eighty-four Fargo. And I'm gonna share my screen. Does everyone see my screen?
Not yet.
There you go.
There you go.
Now we do.
Thank you, everyone. Um. Uh, so this is uh for a, a small proposed addition to the property. At eighty-four Fargo, um, these images here show approximately the location of it on the site. Um, we have here on the s- small survey here, you could see this is our property. Um, with the surrounding properties around it. It's a small um, um, office uh slash living room space uh. That we are creating uh for the homeowners. Um, the short story to it is that the high, the owners hired us recently to replace us. Their non-conforming stair in their home. Uh, they had multiple um, oh, uh, people in their family fall down the existing stairs. And we replaced the stairs with the, with a new stair that met code, much more reasonable. Even when I was measuring it, I, I almost slipped. I was. It, it was a dangerous stair. They're replacing the stair. By replacing it, we've eliminated um their home office. They're both doctors and they both work from home um, uh, often. And have to take Zoom calls and uh they're now, their current home office now is open to the rest of the space. It's a small little cubby of a, of a room now. So the goal is to create this new room. Um, off their property. Um. Off their house, I apologize. So here's the, again, the survey here. The property, it, the addition is completely within the setback. The setback is here, so. You know, the whole house is in, is in the setback. Um, we've uh submitted all the uh paperwork that shows the Florida area ratio, the coverage. Uh, for the property. Um, I know the clients have gone through this recently with other projects that they've been doing in the, in the, on the house. Um. This uh addition here uh is completely on top of their existing garage. Um. And I, and again, you could see in these pictures here, um, this is the existing garage. And the addition would literally sit right on top of the garage, so we're not adding ever, any coverage. Um, we're not uh changing anything in that sense. It's literally just on top of that um space. The existing garage is um, my understanding is tied into an existing uh stormwater drainage system. The new drainage for the uh, the proposed roof would also tie into these existing gutters and tie back into the stormwater. Again, we're not changing the coverage though, um, on the, on this property, on this addition. Um. You could see the, the existing uh loc- location we had to, by installing the stair, we really kinda. We had to open this wall up because the stair initially was ending here. It really was a very treacherous stair. Um, now the office is much smaller, so the idea is to create this room here where the clients can go in here and actually have a, a. A quiet conversation or stick the kids in there uh while they have to work. Um, so you can see the addition uh in this location. We have some elevation that we've put together of this proposed addition to the home, showing the. Location of where it's gonna go and you can see the, in elevation what the changes are. And again, on the back side as well. Um. The clients, um. You can see in these pictures here, this is from the location, from the garage, uh, from the existing garage, looking this direction at ninety Fargo Lane. And this is a shared driveway for um eighty-eight Fargo, eighty-four Fargo and. Um, there's another house uh basically here as well. Eighty-eight Fargo is the one that technically I believe owns this um right away for the driveway. Um, my clients Heather and Matt have both spoken with um the owners at eighty-eight Fargo and ninety Fargo. Have shared the drawings, have shared the, the discussion. Um, both the client, both of the owners of those properties have. Um, given their blessing, um, which will happily get letters in writing uh to also state that, um. Uh, for the next, for next meetings, for zoning or wherever, whoever I'm talking to next. Um, but they have been discussing with them. Um, the other thing, uh, we did get um the Han Engineering report. At ninety-five percent of this can be addressed very quickly. Uh, most of this was submitted. Um, but we did also receive um the, the note from the town um uh landscape architect. Um, there are some trees and we are planning on keeping these trees here as best as we can. Um, the idea is that we will probably have to prune them back a tad bit. Um, and if that is unacceptable or the trees cannot take that type of pruning. They will be replaced and there will be additional or new screening material um. Uh, added to the property in, in, in the form of landscape uh and, and planting. Um, the clients have ha- retained a landscape designer. Uh, to specify uh the correct type of planting, uh, if that's, if that's required or whatever they need to do to. Um, aid in additional uh screening for the uh addition here. Um, again, this was all discussed with the, the neighbors and they were all happy to hear all this. Um. Okay, I'm gonna stop talking now. I'll let you guys uh weigh in.
Hey, there, there's some calculations on, on uh, on the far. Uh. worksheet, need some work. You can discuss that with either Ed or Doug, the engineer.
Okay.
And, and um. And we have to satisfy the view preservation code. Now, if I recollect. Um, this house had input into the house. Under construction to the east on view preservation, so the same applies to this house now. Uh, if I recollect, there were some design changes to the proposed uh house to the east. Uh, to preserve the view of your client. I, I don't, doesn't appear, I've, I've been out there, it doesn't appear there's gonna be impact, but. Until you take a few pictures and show some uh. Uh, sightlines, uh, it's, it's not assumed, so if we need to. sightlines, it's not assumed. So we need to have some some evidence of that the view preservation code was addressed.
Absolutely. That's fair.
You go uphill and take some photos and show. Were you on when we talked about the previous house?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I can do that with line work and some additional photography. It's a little bit narrow over there, but I'll squeeze my way into some shrubs and get some better pictures and sketch it in.
Watch out for the bees. Okay.
I have none.
No question. Ted, are you okay with this?
Get coverage. Take a look at the old approval.
Oh, okay.
From the previous architect and just make sure you got all the coverage he's got.
We did. We were able to work. I know, we specifically waited. The clients had hired us while the other project was kind of finalizing to deal with the stair because that was really a health and safety issue. And then this additional, so we waited to do any further work because we knew we were going to end up going through the different boards. So we waited until everything was finalized. So all the numbers and calculations that we received were finalized from the previous architect through these presentations that I know that he did these final.
Make sure he was in the last set of plans.
Yep.
Your coverage is very far off from his in his final run.
All right, I'll double check that. It shouldn't be. We have.
You're probably using the original one, not the final one.
I'll have to reach out to the client and the contractor who's been working on that to double check. That's news to me. But thank you.
Yeah, as you said, you're not changing the coverage, but it's a good thing to make sure the coverage is.
No, absolutely. And to be honest, I thought we were working from those drawings.
Hey, Sarah, anything in the public?
Nobody's raising their hand to speak and there are no comments in the chat.
Anybody in the auditorium? Mike? Nope, no further questions. Okay, we'll see you next time around with the additions that we asked for.
Sure, sure thing. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Okay, very good. The next one is number 10, 2024-1876 North Broadway, or sometimes called the Maxon Property. But we're going to wait five minutes while we take a small break to accommodate myself.
Sarah, where were you saying this one? Your picture.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, all right. You almost pulled a few doors.
I know. I should know better than to open my mouth.
How long have they?
I mean it somewhere before. So when Sarah, I bet you can get a doc.
You have the, you came up and we approved it.
No.
There's a lot of people.
We certainly.
Good boys. Fellas in that. Well, we got two fellows. Glorious. She's saying, they're both had business. Very rare for two of them to be not even.
I like the way you run the news. I think you have a great customer.
There's at least one person. Oh, yes. Well, thanks a lot of ages because I know so much more than.
So they'll carry you all.
Apparently, where? Like this. So it's real.
Oh, there is now? Oh, this man, my peto.
Hey, everyone, five minutes may not be up, but it's time. None of us please come to order? You know, there used to be a gavel here and I've always wanted to use.
They took it away after Bill Hoffman.
Okay, everyone. As I said before, this is 2024-1876 North Broadway, sometimes called the Maxon Property. We're waiting for the senator to come us.
Good evening, Chair members of the planning board. My name is Catherine Zalantis from Silverberg Zalantis LLC. I represent the applicant, DKRC Barma RE Development. We are before this board for site plan approval and special permit approval. With me tonight are Rocco Barma, the app, Peter F. Gato Jr. of Peter F. Gato Institute, the project architect, and Kredo Holt of DTS Providence Design and Engineering, our project engineer. This exciting project combines multifamily and school use in two new buildings and an existing structure that has historic architectural value. The school will be a primrose school, which is a group premier childcare and early education facilities. Our project proposes 57 rental units, five of which will be moderate incomes and six will be affordable. The project says.
You're going in and out.
Yeah. At times you're garbled.
Sorry, is that better?
Yeah, no.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, but you need to say several words in a row because sometimes the middle of the sentence blocks out.
So this project meets a community need and demand for childcare early education facility and for housing. It's well documented that there's a childcare crisis and childcare shortage in the Hudson Valley. It's also well documented that there is a severe housing need and this project meets both needs. The project blends architectural style of the old building with new. Said the project is retaining and adaptively reusing the existing 60 square foot structure. The applicant has carefully considered this layout. We took into consideration the land project that was born before this board guarding this property and took into concerns the the concerns of the neighbors that live along Strawberry Lane. And we designed this project so that there will be direct access from Broadway. Strawberry Lane will only be used for emergency access for unloading purposes for the existing structure. The high elevation on the site will remain the existing structure. Parking will be underground. Nine seven parking spaces are provided underground and 12 surface spaces. There's going to be extensive open space as part of this project with an opportunity for extensive recreational passive recreational opportunities. The plan we submitted and that you have before you needs two variances, both for FAR and for coverage. This plan has since been revised and we are no longer seeking variances for FAR for coverage. The new plan, which we have also share with you tonight, is actually identical in building prints. The built footprints have been narrowed slightly and we worked on interior so that we can achieve a zoning compliant plan. Also, specifically, we are now proposing a sidewalk along Broadway and this affords initial potential for coverage and FAR. That will, this will require a separate approval from the BOT. The applicant who's here before you will remain part of this community. This is not just a developer, but this is a developer operator. So this applicant will own and operate the primrose school and the multifamily unit. This applicant has a proven track record and I would like to have the opportunity for the applicant to go through some similar projects in New Jersey and Pennsylvania that have been done or successful projects. So the path forward that we will take for this application is that we will be formally submitting the new plan, the zoning compliant plan, along with other information that analyzes and addresses other areas of environmental concern like traffic in greater detail. We're really here to get some initial feedback from the board, comments from the public, and we request as a housekeeping item that this board declare its intent to be lead agents Secra, and now like to introduce you to Rocco Barma from the applicant.
Before you come on, I think it would be a good idea if you brought up the site plan, the rendering of the site plan that has been submitted now. So there's this the public gets an idea of what we're talking about. I don't know if you want to do that now, but I'd like to see it. Share a screen on that.
Peter, is Peter Gato on the Zoom?
Peter, if you're in the meeting, can you please hit the raise hand button?
Is Peter Gregory on? Is that who you mean?
No.
Is it Peter Gregory? There may be.
He's from our engineering firm. Peter Gato is the architect. He should be on the meeting Zoom.
He's being promoted now.
There he is.
Okay. Hey, everybody, the board?
Yes, not everybody in the public is computer savvy to find the application on the village website. So I'm sure there's people that have no idea what this looks like. So could you bring it up on the screen?
Sure. Let me share the screen here.
Knowing that this that you're bringing in a revise, it will slightly change the configuration, but the general idea will be there. Correct?
Absolutely. I was trying to share my screen. The permissions are strange. Hold on one second.
There you go.
Okay, you see it? Great.
Yeah, okay, proceed. Now that we can see something.
So. There you go. You know, they're looking at my screen. Can you see it, Rocco?
Very clear.
Okay. Rocco, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rocco Barma from Barma Development. I want to thank everybody for their time this evening and to review this application.
Excuse me, we're not hearing you. You need to speak closer to the mic or slower or both?
Happy mind, I am.
How about now?
No. I didn't even hear what you said. I know you said something.
Can you hear me now?
That's better. Okay.
Great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rocco Barma from Barma Development. I want to thank everyone for taking the time to review this application and consider this plan with the residents and with the village. So what is Barma Development? We are actually a developer in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and now in New York as well, where we develop for multifamily, standalone office, retail, and institutional facilities like the primrose schools. We have been in business and developing for over two decades. We have done operations and development in both the states in New Jersey and Pennsylvania. So we're not only are we developing the locations and the sites for multifamily and for childcare, we're also operators of primrose schools on the flip side from a secondary sister company that we have, which is Barma Education Group, where we operate the locations that we currently develop. Primrose School is an early childhood education school for children from infancy to kindergarten. It's a private educational facility which has over 500 locations nationwide. We are an accredited university, which, sorry, accredited by universities for our education program that we deliver to our students from a very early stage. From our development standpoint, we actually develop within communities, for communities, with the communities. So in essence, all of our approach for development is based off of what we feel, what we find is a draw within the community. Early childhood education is a sector that we have, we'd like to believe for the last decade pioneered with our experience in operation and understanding the draw and the need within the communities. And as Kathy from Zalantis, our council stated, it is an essential need and has been considered a draw and a requirement and a need in a lot of the towns and the villages and the counties throughout the country, especially after COVID, where the country failed to deliver because of having need for childcare. We also look to develop alongside an ecosystem where we develop multifamily or retail alongside our educational facilities to create a village aspect where we build an ecosystem and is serviced within. So residents from the community, we expect to be either being patrons or some sort of facilitators for the educational facility. Either being patrons or some sort of facilitators for the educational facility or the retail. So we're trying to bring an ecosystem within each of our projects. To be again, part of the community and to deliver something which is going to be a need and a draw within the community as well. We look for sites and look for locations where we also are able to. Bring and maintain and adapt to the community as well. Hence, in this case, doing adaptive reuse for one of the desires of the residents that is there. Which we believe is the beautiful aspect of maintaining and continuing on this site. We married this project with the school and with our our apartment and our mixed residence places. With one bedroom and two bedroom after considering a similar project that we completed in West Orange, New Jersey, in a similar demographic. Where we discovered the need for one bedrooms more so than the two bedrooms. Because we realized that a lot of the families that migrated out of or out of New York City or metro areas wanted to come and taste the suburban market. But wanted to have a smaller place before they really invested completely into the community with buying a house. So we took also also those factors into considerations. We did, we delivered, we are looking to deliver residences which are somewhat of a larger space for accommodating people working from home. And also accommodating with smaller families. I think that's pretty much the synopsis of the project. I think our team, I wish, well, I don't wish. We had about six to seven iterations of this project before our team brought this together to us. And we find that this complements the site, complements the village, complements the surroundings. To really, really bring the best of the site, but we are here to get all comments and suggestions.
Hey, thank you for the presentation. Councilor, is there a present presenters?
Uh, yes, Peter Gato, our architect, going to present now.
Hello, board. Hello, everybody. Thanks for having us on tonight. So as Rockland Kathy alluded to, I'll just run through the the quickly the submitted plans. And then I'll go jump to, we have some new updated plans and some renderings and some photographs and such to discuss. That are zoning compliant. And really, the biggest difference is. The the width of the buildings narrowed slightly. And then the interior configuration was changed from from townhouses, which you see before you to now just ones and two bedrooms. So let's see, I'll take you through here. Actually, take it through this one.
Did you mean to say no townhouses now?
No townhouses now.
You mean a townhouse in the legal sense of a townhouse?
Yes. Yes, the actual, the definition, we walk into one door and then you go up and you inside your unit. For. To the second floor, and that is that is vertical living versus horizontal living.
And and well, townhouse in the legal sense.
In the prior. Prior plan, there were proposed townhouses, but they're all, they're all the units were multifamily rental units, so not in the legal sense of a town. Just style of a town.
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you. Sorry for interrupt.
That's okay. So can you see the site plan still? Is that what we're looking at? Okay. Now it's photos, right?
Yeah. No, it's just you guys. I mean, it's photos, but it's not photos of the site. It's photos of the fact for you.
Oh, let me share again. Are permissions on your end?
Sarah, we need to, you need to do something to have him come in.
Hey, this is just in. Next one.
You're not Peter Gregory, correct? You're Peter.
Gato.
Okay, try it again.
Anybody want to move to this side so you can see that?
It's not yet.
One more time here, let's see. I had a second ago. You guys see it or not yet?
No, not yet.
We'll try to reshare it again, so.
Why don't you go out and come back in?
I was gonna say, what in my long.
You had me for a second, right? Let's see.
Sign off and then sign back in.
This was somebody did earlier and they got it going.
Peter, I can just reshare the screen that I had originally up, but I won't have your rendering unless you want to forward them to me and I'll reshare them here.
Oh, that was your screen. Okay.
Yeah, that's. Now I see. There we go. We try work time.
We lost you. You're going out and coming in. Okay.
Don't miss your trouble. There we go.
There we go. Okay.
That was Peter.
We lost Peter.
Peter, I'm muted.
Mute. There you go. My first time doing it since, I'm just kidding. So sorry about that. So the, as Kathy explained, Rocco explained, the property is such, we're taking advantage of a lot of opportunities within the. The the complex terrain, historic nature of the house. And preserving Strawberry Lane as just emergency, no access up there. And and we are, we're actually coming off of Broadway in between where the no large trees are. So we're not taking down a large tree there. So we purposely picked that point of entry. And as as you can see, as you come through and the advancing drawings, I'll I'll show you. That we have a balance of buildings that are flanking and are. Low, two stories tall in this front element towards Broadway and only three stories tall in the gray area. And by flanking the 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 house. It does a few things. One, it creates a nice social courtyard. And this lovely outdoor landscape courtyard sets up the historic house very nicely. So from from Broadway, as if in the wintertime, you could see the trees. On either side and clearly you can see the house up the hill and this would preserve that view. As the two buildings are on either side of it and not interrupting the view of the house or hidden behind. The and the buildings themselves are single, one bedroom, two bedrooms. And on the ground floor of the lower building is a school that Rocco is referring to now. So there's an underground garage, which is accessed this point under here. And drop off spaces which are just carefully balanced in the front as well. The center section and Peter Gregory and DTS could explain later, but in terms of water control, factor of safety in the site. We have a few different places to put it and then we're actually creating a nice water feature which the residents could walk around. And enjoys an amenity which is also doing dual purpose as a as a technical retaining for for water that's on the site. And I'll just kind of show some, also we're respecting the easements on and respecting all the property lines and the borders and the setbacks as well. So this is a view from Broadway facing the property. Believe it or not, the building is actually shown in rendered form in here. It's right, right through the trees. You can barely see it. Here's a view from Strawberry Lane. And again, our building is actually in here behind these trees. You can kind of see glimpses of it there. And as we kind of go through the site, this is we're maintaining a lot of this open space. We're maintaining a lot of the trees. And we're placing this huge, huge double layer asphalt parking lot. With some carefully articulated buildings that relate to the site as well as hiding all the parked cars. And here's another view. This is up, this is Strawberry Lane. We're keeping that nice historical wall. And this is all the same views we preserved from the different corners in Broadway coming up Strawberry Lane. Here's a quick render example of you if you're standing in at the foot of the court, at the courtyard. Looking up towards and you see the center, the original eighteen fifty house at the top there. So the low escape buildings on either side create a nice happy environment for the kids in school as well as the residents who are living in the in the buildings. And you notice in the foreground, this brick color, the brick texture is the ground, ground brick color of the school. Which is an homage to the brick and textured brick that's in the eighteen fifties houses you see over there. So we picked up some design elements of the of the white vertical columns which stand out prominently. And some white accents in the buildings as well as maintaining the brick, historical brick character. Here's another view sort of looking at that as well. On the opposite side, but just a lot of openness, a lot of light, a lot of sunlight, a lot of a lot of respectful modern materials. With with the traditional materials mixed together to form new responsive buildings that relate to the. The the head house at the top of the of the anchor of the courtyard. And then here is one view kind of looking down towards the Hudson River. Again, the brick is on the lowest left side and then the courtyard is is. Is on the right, in the middle. And again, these are some sort of more flat views of the buildings. This is a view of the interior of the of the outside of the building. And you can see the blue arrows down below. So this is the southern building, we're calling it, with the school at the base. And this house up on the hill. And then this is, this is, if this is a section of the the house on the left side. The bottom rendering has the interior elevation to the courtyard side. And similarly, this building on the northern side where we use is now residential and no school on the side. And residential, as you see, steps back graciously from the setback lines, two stories up to only three stories. And these are some front views which are getting cluttered by a lot of trees, a lot of screening on all sides, but just to be, show you what's happening. So the two story buildings up front courtyard in the middle. The topped image shows the existing eighteen fifty houses are sitting on top of of the land and being prominent to where where the, still being prominent to the entire site. As well. Underground parking. And I'll just quickly go through the plans. We can talk about that. So each, this is sort of a blow up of the plan. And again, you said that the this dark gray is of the the new driveway we're creating onto the underground garage. And underground garage is the entire area of that we're building. All this tan area are classrooms. And the blue area is actually a little tiny community area reserved for the for the residents above. And the courtyard access and doors and such off there landscaped. An open area to to meet the needs of the house, the school, the residents and have a nice outdoor recreation area as well. And the northern building sees it starts as apartments, setback but screened down on the ground floor. Upstairs, it's a series of ones and two bedrooms. Dark is the two bedroom, white, the light blue is the ones. And the existing house, I'm not sure if Rocco mentioned it, but it's going to be repurposed for community space for the residents as well. I'm stepping back, the third floor, it's existing housed, ones and two bedrooms. And then we have the roof. And that's where we are.
Hey, thank you. Any more?
That's it for today, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Let's see, Carlito is going to speak next.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Good evening, everyone. Carlito Holt with DTS Providence. Yeah, Peter, you just leave up the overall site plan. I think that's fine. So I just want to briefly touch upon traffic because we know that that is a very sensitive issue for this area. And I'm not going to go into too much depth because we are still finalizing our traffic impact study, which we are going to submit with our next submission. But I think I think Kathy and Rocco both. Touched upon it in in the initial presentation is that, you know, we understood the sensitivity of access to Strawberry Lane. And utilizing that roadway and and potential impacts for the residents that live along Strawberry Lane. So we we looked long and hard at at how we could. Look to come out to Route Nine or Broadway. And 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 then as opposed to the existing office use, which currently has access to Strawberry Lane. Now take all that traffic that could potentially be going up and down Strawberry Lane all day, going back and forth to the office. And have it directly go out to Broadway and let it get serviced along the state road. So you know, that that's how we arrived upon the plan you're looking at here. You know, we were we're finalizing our analysis. We are doing an analysis along the. Broadway corridor that will include six study locations that we're going to look at during the critical. AM and peak PM commuter periods. And you know, what our initial findings have been is that. Once the traffic gets out to Broadway and dissipates in either direction and finds their way to their destination or going back. Coming from their their origin. We're we're not seeing any significant incremental impacts from the traffic. That will be generated from this proposed project as compared to. The existing office use that, you know, currently has Strawberry Lane access, but. You know, just to reiterate, this keeps all the traffic out on Broadway. And and the existing office use, if it was reoccupied, would likely continue to use the access to to Strawberry. So I think, you know, that's an overwhelming benefit to the Strawberry Lane residents that we keep the traffic. On the state road and and not coming out. To to that local private street.
Good, thank you. Counselors, is the presentation process completed or you have more?
Yes, it's completed for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And yes, traffic is an issue. The six or seven. Or emails that we've gotten or essentially concentrating on traffic. So we're aware of that and I'll get to that when we go through the my my notes here. First of all. Just to be clear, the the trustees of the Village of Irvington went through a big effort. And gave a lot of thought to the rezoning of this to multifamily. So just so the public knows that the multifamily issue is is not an issue because it's already been decided by the trustees. In terms of, I'm glad you mentioned the coverage and the FAR. Because into deliberations by the trustees, they established parameters for for coverage. And FAR, FAR is floor area ratios, the ratio between. The area of the buildings and the area of the property. And there are numbers for that in the rezoning. And being the new. And being the new construction and being this is a recent rezoning, not ancient zoning that time has passed by, this board would not be inclined to entertain any variances from the numbers that were clearly established through a thorough, I don't know how many dozens of meetings reviewed by the trustees. So those numbers, we're not inclined to entertain any variances to that effect. Another issue, this is generic issue. Segmenting, and you probably know what that means, segmenting, asking for everything now and then a year from now, asking for more. And that that'll be frowned upon, especially if asking for more coverage a year from now. If it had been asked today, would it require a variance, which we wouldn't give you? So be careful what you don't include and 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 because we will not be inclined to grant the next year new a new variance on what should have been asked now.
Okay, there's just to be, there's no intent to seek variances or to come in with any larger bill, we are going to own and comply and plan that meets the FAR and the coverage requirements of zone. And part of that is being accomplished by adding a sidewalk along Broadway, which allows for additional coverage, provided that it's at approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The first, the first threshold issue is site capacity. You have fifty seven units and we're not going to establish site capacity because there's some some issues with the site capacity, one of which is is the pond. The pond might be considered a wetland and would be a subtraction. And and while we're on the pond, while I I don't, I want to take everything one at a time. But when we get to drainage, we'll be discussing the pond because, given the topography, the pond is not going to look like that. It's going to be considerably smaller, so we'll get to that. In terms of secret, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, we need a a long environmental assessment form, which I don't think we have that.
No, they you submitted a short form, we need the long form.
And and a thorough environmental review will will commence. In terms of coverage, it's not complete, we need a full breakdown of of the coverage. There's things that retaining walls, make sure all the pathways and walkways are included. And that there are things that are not on there. And while it it's you might consider it a detail to be developed later, but some of these little details might require coverage and we want to get it done upfront. As I said, next year, you can't come back and say, oh, you know, we we didn't account for trash removal and we need sheds for the trash removal, that's coverage. So you're going to need to show us where the trash removal is, with fifty seven units, you probably need maybe two dozen, three yard roll offs, rolling bins. You need to store them somewhere and and many of the developments in the area, store them in in satellite sheds platform with a with a stockade fence around it. And 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 in in my co op, we store them in some of the garages. So you you're going to need to show that and and how those trash satellite areas are going to be accessed by a truck to pick up the three yard container. And 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 you may need a new road or access for the the trash truck. And you you need to show how the the tenants are going to walk to the area because they're not going to walk more than twenty feet, I'm telling you that. I'm president of the ninety four unit, the co op, and you you need to come up with some details on trash because I'm sure it's going to, it probably will affect the coverage. Some other things, the AC and and heating. You're probably going to a heat pumps, where are you going to put them? If if they're on great, you're going to have a concrete pad of some sort. Again, that's coverage, so we'll need to know what you're going to do with heat and heat and AC. And any other pathways or or you got a couple of doors on the south end nearby by the rec building that open out on grass, I mean, is there going to need be a need for a little patio there? So you have to be very accurate with your coverage. That's not shown yet, and and that would be an important aspect to make sure the coverage is accurate. Are you going to need a maintenance shed? I mean, this big property, is there going to be maintenance equipment on site? Is it suddenly going to like it's a scenic cuts and park, there's there are two maintenance garages for the property. And and we don't know if you're going to need a maintenance shed for the maintenance for the maintenance equipment. You already said you're not going to have a pool, I need confirmation of that. And no additional patios, for each patio is additional coverage. Electrical service, I don't know where that is, that may that may entails the coverage. Running out of breath. The Fox, that needs to be adjusted.
Spaces, none of its coverage. The outside parking spaces.
They do?
The parking spaces, yeah.
Okay, I didn't cover. Thank you, Ed. So there's a lot of coverage, you may want to check base with Ed, I'm sure he didn't mention everything, like I said, they're going to require a detailed breakdown of each item of coverage. They add it up and see what it if it measures up to to what's in the code. Traffic, Mary Ann, we discussed. They they said they're hiring.
Well, yeah, they'll have a traffic consultant, the village will hire its own traffic consultant. I went at the end, I was going to talk to the board about about that, about retaining a planning firm for that. I have a recommendation and it would be the firm that's right now doing the Broadway traffic study for the village, but they'll have a traffic consultant, the village will have its own traffic consultant.
So we're going to have our own, we're going to hire, do our own.
Yes.
In spite of the fact of whatever.
Well, yeah, now generally, that's the way it works, the applicant makes a study and then we have we have our traffic, people look at it.
All right, from here forward, in no particular order, if I'm moving along and someone thinks I forgot something, wait till the end, maybe I didn't forget it. Drainage, we we mentioned drainage briefly. If if you bring up the topo, which you don't have to, but the topo appears that the pond is miniscule compared to what you have there as in the rendering. I don't believe you can call that a retention pond because it's not holding it. You have an overflow. And I hope the overflow is not going to a Route nine storm pipe because my understanding that the Route nine storm pipe is beyond capacity, so connecting to a pipe that's at or over capacity is not going to work. So that there are some drainage issues, Doug, you got anything that I?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's it's still under review, there's a lot to.
Yeah. So i- if you check your topography, that pond is not that pond, the way it's rendered. It's it's a great deal smaller and the 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 pond will be considered a wetland or water course, which subtracts from the calculation for site capacity. And and when you put in your stormwater retention basins, you'll need to do some deep hole testing and perpulation test to make sure that it's going to go someplace other than into the street.
Even a manmade water feature that exists on site would be counted again?
Yep. This is down the road a piece, but when it comes time, the construction is going to be detailed, obviously you're over an acre, you need a DEC storm permit and which will entail silt controls, drag out to the Route nine for the trucks or lack of drag out to the trucks, probably the collection bases to collect mud before it runs out onto the street. How the site looks, the the if you go to the west, you already showed the west view, which is what faces Broadway. Now, one of the the trustees had the forethought of in 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 revising the code, one of the lines in there is maintain the scenic character of Broadway. From my point of view, that west view does not represent a scenic view of Broadway. So you need to work on that. The school drop off and pickup, I assume that's going to be the same time that the high school has drop off and pickup and that'll be addressed by our consultants when they do the traffic study. And in terms of the cut curb cut, you are aware that DOT needs to approve that? Have you entered into any negotiations with DOT regarding the curb cut?
That was a question. Yeah, so I apologize, I meant to mention that in in our in my presentation. We had a preliminary meeting with DOT and explained to them, you know, the sensitivity of the of the Strawberry Lane access and that that we think it would be over overall beneficial to to the project and the community if they would entertain direct access to Broadway. And you know, they indicated they didn't take any initial exception with it and they said, you know, provide the permit application and the analysis, which we will be doing.
The issue of a traffic light may may come up and that that could be an issue with, oh, because we already have the the light at the Main Street, the light at the high school and then to put another light if if it it just creates congestion, in my opinion. But the traffic studies will bear that out or not. In the parking area, you have thirty three, at least the way I counted them, thirty three individual tenant storage areas, which is not the same as fifty seven. I'd hate to think that when the tenants start in, that they need additional storage and you wind up subtracting parking spaces from the required number of parking spaces by code. So we need a little clarification on that. And and if you're going to use any of the parking as an afterthought for our storage of maintenance or in any way other than for parking, you you need to tell us that because the computation for code required parking may be impacted if some of that parking is going to use for something other than parking. Emergency access. Now, there there is an issue with the fire truck making certain turns, Ed, you want to elaborate?
We'll need to confirm the turns. It appears that the back driveway can't get a fire truck, a ladder truck for sure. And then we have to talk about the fire access, its requirements and its access and it's if it's over any prior requirement, doesn't want it over any underground utilities that can destabilize the truck in use.
Yeah, that crosshatched area to the north is the utility easement.
And considered coverage.
And considered coverage and and the the little rectangle there shooting off from the pond area is is an emergency access road.
Not sure how the fire truck can get.
And and Yeah, that's one of the roads, that access road is what Ed is talking about as a truck would not be able to access that access road and plus it doesn't go further east. It doesn't go east enough.
I I I believe it doesn't go east enough, it it depends on ladder reach and size of building and roof roof structure. Yeah.
Caesar, can I just say on there that that's an issue that really should be resolved very early on, that that's one of the first issues because it could affect the whole layout. So so we'll deal with that, you know, with the the building department on that, it was almost a a first first issue.
Yeah. Probably should have put it in the threshold issues.
Exactly.
Of site capacity, coverage and and traffic and emergency access. Planting, our arborist, the landscape architect looked at it and she calculated a hundred and fifteen trees on it on the site, fifty six are being removed. So you you need a mitigation plan on the removal of trees, generally speaking, it can be tree for tree, but we'd like to see what you have proposed. There's also various trees that is excavation in the root zone, that'll probably kill those trees. So you 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 need to address that. It's probably Doug, it's part of Suzanne's comments in your.
Yeah, I included it, I'm not, I believe she did. I know that it's it's definitely in ours.
Okay. Yeah, the trees are, now we're Tree City, we we take our trees importantly and we'd like to see that addressed, fully addressed. Height, it's some issues with height, the the way it was calculated, maybe Ed, if you could.
If you take a look at the specific height requirement for this zone and you draw a line from the the lowest of the existing and proposed, let's take it from an imaginary line, you have to demonstrate that it meets that requirement. Further, I I'm afraid of the stairs to the existing building that are proposed may push the existing building over height because you're excavating down. I'll take a look at that.
That's it?
Yeah, it's 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 take a look at the detail in the in the code. It shows how to do height, it's not our standard height. So it's a, it's actually generous and it looks like they're over it.
Okay. I don't know if you got that last.
It it's from existing or proposed, so the lowest of, but the the proposed, it appears to meet the requirements, but not from existing.
So you're saying they need to do some work?
Yeah, it's a couple of feet, it looks like it's a couple more feet.
And then you tend to put the parapet in the height.
Right. Did you hear that? Our staff here feels that the height is is your proposed height is over the requirements.
I I heard that.
Is that for all three?
I don't think it is.
Demonstrated.
Let let me finish speaking. Like I said, we'll try not to interrupt each other because it gets messed up in the transcript as nothing was said. They'll have to deal with the, you'll have to check off off offline away from the meeting because I mean, to get into the the details of fight of the of the of the height requirements requires detailed discussion with our engineer and building inspector. So if you have some basic questions, we'll entertain it. But the parapet above the top of the building was up, appears not to be included also. So if you have a question about that, now is the time to ask. You have a question, counselor, you had a question?
I was just clarifying as to what was it the existing thing was the concern or the proposed buildings?
It it's the area, it's in my, it's in my comments, you could just review them.
Just demonstrate how you measured height for each of the buildings.
Okay.
Right now, if I heard you correct, right now, it looks like you're over.
It's a glance, we need the line drawn for all three buildings.
Okay. And lastly, in my notes, Marian will get to this because it's a legal thing, not a, there's a recreation fee, I'm sure you're aware. And being we're talking mitigation for fifty some odd trees that may not all fit on the property. There are, there is opportunity to donate to the village, donate, to provide the village with money to plant trees at other locations if if it's not applicable to this location, so. With that said, did I miss anything or anybody would like to add?
Dan, very, just how deep will the pond be, the storage pond? Do you expect it to be?
Yeah, you're, if you go a couple of slides down, you have a horizontal profile and the pond is not shown in it.
Yeah, no, yeah, we understand, we're working on the technical, the depth because of the size of it, we're determined.
I work, pay particular attention to the topography because, given the topography that we see, the pond looks nothing like that.
Well, I mean, if you think of it this way, the high side will be towards the east and obviously the low side will be towards the west, so it could certainly end up that way.
Well, the the low side, you're correct, is to the west. And given the low side, it's not going to look like the pond that you have in the rendering, it's going to look a lot smaller. Unless we're looking at it correctly. You can discuss that with Doug.
Yeah, well, we'll clarify, no problem.
Okay, Michael?
Two questions, I'm not going to review what you said. Where else have you done this next use development with the school?
In West Orange, New York is the most recent, sorry, West Orange, New Jersey, the most recent project where we actually had seventy multifamily units with a school on the same site. It's actually more densely populated area and has over one point two million people coming across the street, which is the zoo.
And I thought that you had, and Peter may have said that you've planned to use houses for community space, so have some use of the house for community space, I may have misheard.
Yes, that's correct, we are, at present, we are planning on having two of two. Yes, that's correct. We are uh at present, we are planning on having two or two unit, two apartments within the within the existing house. And part of it being used as a community space. There is community space within each of the buildings as well for the residents. And one of the questions came up earlier is how is the trash going to be picked up? That's usually run down in 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 these uh apartments through a trash chute that runs down the corridor. Leads to the garage into a trash compactor and it's rolled off to the outside. Um when when where the trash company comes pick picked up picks up the rollers. Or in this case, we may actually take the suggestion of having some sort of an exterior. Uh enclosure where the uh trash is rolled off to and we can, we'll come back with details of that as well.
So the plan is to convert the eighteen fifty's house to two units plus community space?
That's correct.
Hey, imagine the uh trash. Uh if you're gonna do it where the parking is, you're not gonna you're gonna have to eliminate some parking. And keep in mind that we recycle here, so you'll probably need at least. Two bins per building for cardboard, we had a lot of cardboard with Amazon. Uh you'd probably need at least two bins for garbage. And a bin for paper and a bin for bottles and cans. Uh that's ex extensive number of uh. Uh for the north, for each building, probably uh uh at least six or seven bins that need to be stored somewhere. And. Is 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 the driveway, the access to the garage high enough to support a garbage truck where you. Where you're gonna be wheeling them out. To the to the to the road. And somehow uh truck is gonna sit there blocking the driveway when people want to. Get out to go to work uh a- as these uh fifteen uh rollers get rolled out to the truck.
Yeah, no, correct, I understand, and that's valid, we will bring back as a technicality, trucks don't usually go into the parking, into the garage, they come to the exterior space. If you see the notch at the end of the uh at the entrance of the building, the notch that's coming out, which is like a K is usually made for a K turn, but that's. Where we would end up putting a trash enclosure, so the truck comes in. Uh with its front loader, comes right in, pulls at the roller and um loads and then goes right back out, but again, we will get details. Um and show the K turns and um for a complete accessibility.
He mentioned an enclosure and that enclosure. That becomes covered. Okay.
Yeah, um just to to follow up on Mike's question um about other projects, maybe you could. Send us a list of some of the other projects, um the the formal names of them, so that you know, we can look at the. Look at them online, um maybe Kathy could send it to me and I'll forward it to the board, just so names of some or however you want to do it. And then the other the other thing is what what strikes me a little um odd is is the forty, the um. The forty-one-one bedroom units. Um you you said that you found that that's what you needed in New Jersey, I would just like to 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 fall um. Double check whether that's gonna work in Westchester, because almost everybody I know, I mean. Wants bigger apartments than that, but anyway, so if you could just uh. Flush that out a little bit, what what whether that whether that's gonna work. In Westchester.
Yeah, I have the same question about the school, is there a marketing report on the school that? So that if it doesn't work, it because you want to convert it to additional apartments, which may not fit the site the capacity?
I don't, we we won't be able to simply just do it, we would have to come back, but that's not the intent, this is actually gonna and we.
No, I mean, that that's the problem, if if the school is a bust, you you you're gonna, if you want apartments, you're gonna exceed the site capacity, which is not gonna happen.
Yeah, no, we understand that, school, school is a is is a desire in this community, uh Primrose, like I said, has five hundred locations. They've graphed out this territory as a desire based on studies and demographics that they've um and that they've done themselves. And we validate those because we're also operators, we understand the markets where where there is desire and where there is need and we we feel. We feel and find Irvington to be a starved market where a lot of the young families just don't have childcare. Just don't have the facility, so um we we're very confident this will be a successful school um for the community. But.
Keep in mind. It's not gonna exceed, as far as I'm concerned, while I'm sitting here. That it's not going to exceed site capacity. If you want to convert the school, it will never happen. Okay, thank you, um Ed, anything else?
Um I don't know, there was a couple of variances needed also for retaining walls uh side yard setback. And uh hundred and twenty-five feet from Broadway buffer. And um. Oh yeah, so uh retaining wall uh variances.
How did I forget the Broadway buffer?
Yep.
The retaining walls need to be part of your coverage. In Irvington, they are. And I noticed on the plan, there's quite a few flowing around. Along the east side and around the pond, wherever they are, they need. Again, going back, you need a detailed breakdown of the coverage so that when. Building inspector and the engineer look at it. They're perfectly clear that you that all the coverage that's possible here. Uh that included in the first cut. So you so as you build it and then you find out, oh, we gotta do this and and then you have to come back. We'd rather not see you come back for some coverage that you forgot. So. It's it's a it's a very detailed issue. Uh as as Ed said, the parking spaces are covered and I don't think they were included in these.
Uh we didn't get a breakdown.
Yeah, we didn't get a breakdown, so we don't know if it was. Okay. Mike, anything?
Nothing, bro. Just out of curiosity, you have a retention pond near a school, a pre-K school, and then a few blocks away, you have. Uh ICC and up the street, up the road, we have Irvington public, I mean. Wouldn't you need some type of fence around the retention pond or?
There's all different criteria, but we have to kind of get to.
We got the details, okay.
We gotta figure out if it's really a pond first.
Yeah, okay, I got you, okay.
Because of because of the topography.
Mike, they gotta work on that.
And Sarah, anything, um let's do uh the auditorium first, this way, uh they have to say they may want to go home, the people that are home are home. Uh so we'll do the auditorium first. Any any speakers?
That's sir, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Uh Darius Chef is here with the law firm of Harris Beach, representing the Irvington Neighbors Against Traffic. Uh I represent about twenty-five individuals, part of this L uh limited liability company. That live in immediate area, we know this area, our clients know this area better than anyone. Similar to this board and our and your staff, which has done an unbelievable job looking at this already. A couple of quick housekeeping issues, I think. I I mentioned this to the village attorney this morning and also counsel that the notices to the neighbors was not done properly. Uh in the newspaper, it had to be thirty days for the June, July and August months, and it wasn't done, it was only the fourteen days to the newspaper. I bet you. But I bring that up. It's a newspaper notice.
Okay, not the.
Well. It's not really a big issue because here it's gonna.
I I just bring it up as a procedural issue in the first instance, and then secondly, I think um. Uh member Smith made a great point, you you made a statement of a a multi-use. Lot here, they're proposing to put residential and multi uh and a school, which is not. Both of them are not permitted on the same site here. What what the trustees did in two twenty-seven dash forty-four point eight, they went to permitted special uses on this site. And it allows multifamily housing, it allows schools, but it doesn't allow mixed use. They specifically did not allow mixed use, so trying to have two uses on this site is illegal. So we asked that staff look at that closely. Uh I bring it up in the first instance, but I think you you mentioned the mixed use, which is not allowed. So this project is stopped from the get-go, in our opinion, uh in the first instance. Now, there's a number of other issues, um especially traffic. That's what we're concerned about, but there's a number of issues in the special permit, which I'd like to talk about, the criteria that you have. Specifically under two twenty-four dash forty-seven thirteen, additional requirements for the special permits. That will not have a significant visual impact on the character of the neighborhood, this clearly will, I think the. Visual renderings that were shown with the trees blocking everything, we have to see it when it's not with trees, number one. And this is literally putting a sho- shoehorning buildings into this site with. Who knows what the retention pond will look up, who knows what these buildings will look like, very, very industrial looking, they don't meet this site. You have a beautiful building that's there currently, you have a beautiful building just to the north, and now you're gonna put the institutional building here. Right down to the south also, a beautiful majestic building on the uh west side of Broadway too, and now we're gonna have an institutional building like this here. Fails that. Number two, will not generate noise or create other disturbance that would be detrimental to nearby residents, we haven't heard one thing. Mentioned about how this is going to be constructed. Where are the construction trucks gonna come in, what's gonna happen here, is it blasting, is it chipping, how they're gonna deal with the retaining walls? Are they gonna use Strawberry Lane to build, they're gonna have to at some point use it. Which brings me to another section of this specific code provision two, if Strawberry Lane is used. Specifically. I'll get to that in a minute, I have a few more before that. So the noise is gonna be a problem, the harmony and the character of the neighborhood, this is a residential area. Right across the street, residential area, offshore Strawberry Lane residential area. Only now to the north are there are there offices and co-ops and nothing like this, no schools in this immediate area. You have to go down by Main Street, you have ICC, you have Good Shepherd, you have the high school, you have the middle school, then you have a Main Street School there. Not in this specific area, this is a residential zone, I understand. That the multifamily housing was looked at by the board, but again, this is two uses on one site illegal. Now, the most important thing, while all these issues are very important, is the traffic impacts. Will not result in unmitigated significant adverse traffic impacts, this is what the trustees said back in whatever, when they passed this law. This will create unmitigated traffic impacts, there's a number of issues here, which I know this board is aware of, maybe the developer's not aware of. So there's been a study done by AKRF, I believe, uh the village attorney in indicated recently in December of twenty twenty-three. That analyzed this area. One of the main things that they said. Is that. Any potential development has to look at that study and the DOT study that's happening now too. Don't know if the developer was aware, a few months back, there was a study by DOT. For the River Towns to create single lanes on Broadway. And bike lanes and 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 um sidewalks. Has that been looked at, the prominent engineer should look at that very closely. Our initial analysis on the study for current for this proposed two uses sets. This utterly fails this area. Not only does it fail the um the intersections at Sunnyside and Broadway, Main Street and Broadway, Riverview and Broadway. This is a dangerous location to come out of. They want to cut into our walls. The the um Broadway walls, which is also not permitted under your code, which they want to do, to shoehorn this building in here. It'll cause a traffic nightmare, left turns out, left turns in will be a disaster, there's single lanes too, where someone needs to make a left in. Backups will go all the way, I was driving the other day. They were backed up from Main Street all the way to Lindhurst, the traffic in the morning. So the traffic has to be looked at, all this traffic has to be looked at, but they're failing, this this. Project is is wrong from the get-go, it doesn't fit on this site and it doesn't fit here, this is a. This will be a traffic disaster, my cl- my clients live on on um Fargo Lane, on Meadowbrook, on Riverview Road. And they can't get out now. I uh I think we should look at all of the um. Police reports also, I know just recently there were two accidents, one coming out of Circle Drive, just uh south of this site and one coming out of Riverview Road. This this is uh 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 more accidents waiting to happen, especially if they go single lanes on each way, it's just a disaster. So we have a number of issues, I think any of the issues that they're requesting tonight, which they want secret to begin. That there's a myriad of issues that need to be looked at. If if this project gets off the ground, which I don't even think it should even be looked at, I think it's illegal in the get-go. I think it's a traffic disaster, I think they don't meet all the requirements that they need to under the code, and I think they should. Go back to the drawing board, West Orange may need another uh uh Primrose uh. Site, but not Irvington, Irvington doesn't need it, it's the wrong site for this, it's the wrong location for this, and we ask that you. Send them home. That's it for tonight, I know some people may want to talk too. Thank you.
Sure there are. All right, some of the things you said, I I think, you know, a a clear no-go, yes-go with the mixed use and and. It the indication that your opinion, it's it's not allowed, it's code, Marion, you have.
Yeah, no, that's wrong, in fact, the um originally, it was called the mixed use district, but had more uses, but. Um the if you read the purpose of the districts. It is. The multifamily office district permits a mix of residential, commercial and institutional uses in the management. That was very clear from any board of trustees discussion about it, that they envisioned. Next use of it could be, it could be just only multifamily, or it could be a mix of the uses permitted. In other districts, where it's only one use permitted per lot, like in the residential district, it says, but not more than one per lot. That that specific issue was discussed and drafted only. So that part's not right.
Yeah, and and you you're correct, and I agree that the the view from Broadway uh. That was shown in the west um elevation, as I already said, it it. And and the code says it needs very specifically, the trustees had the forethought to say. Uh it needs to meet the scenic character of 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 Broadway. And in my opinion, it doesn't, so that that needs to be changed, now the the broader view of the rest of the structure that's not seen from Broadway. Uh I'll I'll we we'll look at that, but. I'm convinced that the west view has to be changed, but. Uh now, Mike, you mentioned the DOT study, the the Marian, would that be? Because DOT is looking at bike lanes on the ground, right?
Yeah.
And that would be something we have to bring to the attention of our consultant.
Yeah, yeah, they they will, they will familiar with it, yeah. If if in fact, and I I would ask you at the last, at the end of the meeting, whether you wanna. Um retain AKRF and then we'll ask the board trustees to hire them, but they're very familiar with it, they're probably the most familiar with this, plus. AKRF was um ha helped the village in drafting the zoning for this site as well.
I I I didn't think of it at the time, but I I have a note. If there is a pond and 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 if it doesn't rain, it's gonna be, it's gonna be uh an appearance issue of what it with. What the hole in the ground is gonna look like from Broadway. Because I've seen retention basins, real retention basins and detention basins, when they're not full. Uh I almost guarantee it'll be a shopping cart on it or something, but. You need to, we need to know what it's gonna look like, if there's no water in it. And judging from our look at the topography, uh you may not have a a a pond at all, um you need to do that. And and you're right about the construction, it's very very concerning, but that's at the end, we'll have a. They'll go over a construction, they'll have to submit a construction sequence and of of how. Uh mud is not gonna leave the property even by a truck or just getting run runoff uh from severe rainstorm. And and there is a D D E C general permit that have to comply with, because it's more than an acre. As you know.
And and traffic with the uh, sorry, and traffic with the um.
The trucks.
With the trucks coming in and out, bringing out loads, where's the dirt and how many tons a day, where are they gonna go, are they going south, are they making a left on Strawberry Lane? Because they're using Strawberry Lane, they have to. So that's not really allowed unless it's absolutely necessary.
Okay, we we got that.
Yep.
Excuse me while I continue to make notes. Okay, thank you for that, uh I'm sure there's other people in the audience who may want to add to the. Esteemed councilors of.
Hi, uh Tony Altamira, I live in one Meadowbrook Road, which is arguably ground zero. Uh for this project, um I'm uh. Speaking on on behalf of my wife and I, who live on one Meadowbrook Road, and also on behalf of uh. My fellow members of the um, we call it INAT, Irvington Neighbors Against Traffic. Our concern has always been the impact of any type of development uh in in the new MFO zone. Uh as it relates to traffic, um we don't care what's being built, we want, we 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 are interested in what the implications are. From a traffic perspective, some of our members live on Strawberry Lane and going back quite a ways, they were very concerned about things that. And going back quite a ways, they were very concerned about things that would happen on Strawberry Lane, but most of our members live. On North Broadway, Fargo, Meadowbrook and other areas along Broadway. And I know that this particular developer. Made a lot of comments around how he took into account considerations. From neighbors who live on Strawberry Lane and as a result, he's going to create the access on North Broadway. To us, that's even worse. Um. There, this type of project very clearly require, it requires a special permit to go forward. As a result, it requires heightened scrutiny from from this board in considering. The uh, all the implications associated with the project, including traffic. It's very specifically states in in the new statute. That uh, traffic is one of the additional requirements that must be looked at. Very carefully, along with many of the other things that our council referenced. And when it comes to traffic, it's very specific about what those uh, requirements must uh, must be, how they must be satisfied and and. A A K R F, the traffic consultant used by the village, uh, recently concluded an existing condition study. And as part of that study, it, there were some very interesting findings. One was that along the corridor during the peak periods in the morning and the afternoon. Um, in rush hours, uh, four out of those six uh, intersections that Darius referenced. Are uh, approaching uh, a failure level of operations, um, a failure grade. This project, based on. A uh, any, the usual method of calculating trip generation for multifamily housing or for a school. Would generate something close to four hundred and seventy-three, to be precise. Uh, additional trips during the peak periods, a little over two hundred during the morning rush hour, a little over two hundred and change during the evening. Rush hour. In addition, on a daily basis, it would generate close to eleven hundred trips in total. That is, also, uh, under the um, the the environmental uh, assessment form. The 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 application indicates that uh, a significant increase in traffic. Would uh, would be a level of a hundred trips or more. And so this is four, close to five times the level of what the uh, the the environmental uh. The E C says is significant from a from a volume level. We're looking at this and we're seeing. An enormous amount of increased traffic during the peak periods. Traffic that cannot possibly be absorbed by the North Broadway corridor. It will. Our traffic expert has reviewed it and has concluded that it would absolutely result in those four. Um, intersections that the village's expert already identified as vulnerable and near failure to fail. And not only will those uh, intersections fail in terms of failing grade, the the, there'd be a spillover effect. And 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 other intersections that weren't um, studied by the by the uh, the AKR folks. Uh, at the time, like Meadowbrook, Fargo, uh, and maybe Circle Drive, the uh. Those are likely to be close or probably failing as well as a result. So. This is all about traffic from our perspective. When you have traffic problems, when this turns into a parking lot. Like it already does during the rush hour, during the school uh, release times during the school mornings, you have. You have people trying to cut in and out, uh, trying to avoid that traffic. Scoring down the side streets, you have uh, pollution galore because of all of the additional. Uh, you know, fumes and all the rest of it. It it failed, this this fails the standard that. The code provides for, and therefore, to me, this is, this is a non-starter. And they need to go back to the drawing board and figure out what might. Possibly fit. I don't believe frankly, anything more than a handful of single-family homes could probably satisfy. The standard that's in the code, uh, and I don't see any reason why we should vary from that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, Mary Ann, it looks like we don't have to do a traffic study. He already did. Thank you. That was very accurate. We'll be able to see what our traffic, how close. Our traffic study that we're going to do comes to that. And he mentioned single-family homes. Is there something in the code about that?
Well, they're not, it's not a permitted use in this district.
Same family homes are not a permitted use in this district.
I I'm not sure. I think it um.
Yes. Got to speak into the mess room.
No, they're not. The board, the board considered, actually considered that and specifically said they did not want single-family houses.
Thinking at the code. Okay, um. I'm sure there are other people, there are a lot of people sitting here. Anyone else like to speak before we go to the Zoom uh, participants? You got a pad in front of you there. Oh, here we go. Bye.
Um, thanks for letting me speak. Um, to everybody, you know, it feels like deja vu all over again at Maxon. Luke Jordan, a lot in Strawberry Lane. I made my joke there, but got interrupted. Um, it really does feel like that, right? It's like this Maxon thing just keeps coming up and over and over again. And the scale of the projects is the thing that really just always baffles me. Um, given the kind of area that Irvington is, it's very natural environment. Single-family homes, especially in that area, all over the place. I think I counted uh. Fifty-seven birds, unique species in that area, you know, it's quite an environment. Um, but the fact that these projects get to the board, I think is a fundamental issue here. Um, and I think the town sort of needs to come to terms with that. Um, and the only one, the only reason this one feels small is because the other one was so massive, right? It was like out of control, and I think everyone realized that. Um, it feels like the elephant in the room is like, and so much opposition here, you know, beyond the traffic. It's just this poor decision to rezone in the first place that was made during this haze of fevered COVID, right? When traffic wasn't really even a thing then. We weren't, it wasn't foremost in our minds, but here we are, right? And like, we sort of sit here and entertain some of these things. People do all this amazing work. They're getting paid a lot of money. You know, somebody's financing all this stuff and. You know, I just feel like, why not just guide a firm? To do something reasonable before we sit here for three hours and debate something that's probably not going to get passed, right? And these are very different times, maybe even from three years ago. You know, habitat loss, climate change, invasive species, overpopulation, right? We all know this stuff, right? But, you know, you look at Broadway today, on Strawberry Lane, literally, there's a hole in the ground. They're diverting traffic all over the place like crazy, right? We've got uh, five feet of water every time it rains, spewing out out of that thing. And then we, you know, you're asking how deep that. Thing's going to be, but we've got five feet of water coming up out of a drain, literally. Um, a lot of us walk to town, right? My wife walks to work. She crosses the street. She walks the dog. We go to the farmer's market. We walk down the aqueduct. We got to cross that street. And like, the whole light thing. It's actually not the worst idea. I get it that it's going to cause more, but that's a really tough street to cross, right? Um, in the last year, Villawaro Wall totally destroyed by a truck, FedEx truck. Three-car accident on Fargo crashing to the pole across from Maxon. That's just like right in like a two-block area on Broadway, right? Probably with injuries and cost to the top, to the town, right? Can barely get a car and an Amazon truck up there. There's the culvert on Strawberry, right? It's really tough, really tight. Quick quest, quick question. So how do you enforce the emergency lane? Uh, is that something that you guys are? Familiar with?
I'm not sure what you mean.
So if if Strawberry Lane is an emergency road, how is that enforced? We don't have to answer that now, but that's just one of the concerns.
Sure that it was identified as an emergency lane.
It was mentioned, but it's it's more than that.
And it's more than that, right? So it's going to be actually a road.
That that'll be part, if it gets past, if it gets further along, that's part of the.
Got it, got it. Okay, cool. So I I'll wrap up. I know uh, there was a lot here, you know, I don't know, developers not even from Westchester. The last one was, at least they sort of got it. I don't know if these people have ever visited. Strawberry Lane, be good to maybe get them in there, have a chat with the neighborhoods, show them off and so, you know, say, hey, scale this back because they can see it and they say, oh, wow. This would not fit in this area. So. I just, the big question for me is how do these projects keep coming in at this scale? So that's, I think, a fundamental sort of elephant in the room. We all got to answer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. In regards to the elephant in the room, the trustees.
Yeah.
Spent a lot of time and a lot of hearings and heard a lot of testimony. And they created this zone, I'm sure with all the things you said in mind. Uh, they they are competent people and they did what they did. Uh, essentially, in 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 a broad sense. Uh, the trustees uh, create the skeleton of what's going on and and. And pun intended, we flesh it out as to what it's going to look like. Uh, so that's the situation. The skeleton has already. Been established by the trustees. Uh, in their elected capacity, uh, of what what their vision is for the village. Um, in terms of, we have to look at that, the uh, use of street. Uh, council, you need to elaborate on the use of Strawberry Lane. That was a good comment. Uh, other than the uh, the cars that go or the the two residents that are up in the existing building. What are you?
The existing access off of Strawberry Lane will be remaining, but that existing access will only serve as an emergency access. And for loading and unload purposes for the residences going to be in the existing building.
Okay. And 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 I forgot to ask, is is two residents up there? Where are they parking?
So they'll be parking underground? In the underground parking facility? There's not going to be any parking off of that that existing access.
Well, I I I look carefully at it and and I didn't see a readily available. Uh, access from that building to the parking, so it's 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 uh. Several feet higher and and I thought I saw steps that were rather large in number of steps. And then access to the basement from the residents up there. Seems a little inconvenient to me and probably wind up parking in the little cul-de-sac up at the top of the hill.
Yes.
Uh, if if you could identify that that route of how they get from. Are they really going to use the people in that, the two residents in that building up there? They're really going to use the parking down below? I I don't know.
I mean, that is the plan. We will provide further details in the next session.
Well, the the point is that, you know, they're going to be inconvenienced. That's not a planning board issue. But if they wind up parking in it up in the uh, in the cul-de-sac, that is.
Right, and it will not be an area that can be used for parking except for, you know, limited unloading and loading purposes.
Okay, thank you. Hi.
Hi, um, my name is David Kaplan. Uh, we've lived at Cir- on Circle Drive. Uh, for more than thirty years. Our driveway is on Strawberry Lane. So we, though our address is is circle, we are interested strawberry uh, users. I can't speak to retaining walls and trees and ponds and all the rest. The issue to me is traffic and our group that I'm part of. Uh, is chiefly concerned with traffic and I can speak traffic. We've lived here more than three decades and the traffic on Broadway in the North Broadway Quarter has never been worse. Um, and this is now with Maxon being dormant. Instead of having, you know, a full load of uh, employees every day. Our ability to get out of Strawberry. At rush hour in the morning or get back at home. At rush hour in the in the afternoon and when school lets out. Is to the point where we simply avoid it now. The traffic. Heading up north to Tarrytown, and this is not just because of current construction, be it Sunnyside or up in Tarrytown itself. The traffic on North Broadway can back up all the way to Main Street. I know it. I live it. Uh, I'm not commuting to the city anymore, but I see it and, you know, my schedule conforms to the traffic problem. That's under the current situation. And before any traffic reports, dueling traffic reports, studies or others are conducted. The reality is the disaster we have now. If you add in. This proposal. With, as Tony pointed out, five hundred additional uh, 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 car trips. It's going to get worse. You don't need a physicist or a traffic engineer to figure that out. How much worse is it going to get? How many more intersections are going to fail? How much further is the backup going to go south or northward? How many more cars are they going to be on Fargo or Meadowbrook? I don't know, but it's going to be worse than it is now. And should Broadway? Be reduced from four lanes to two lanes, which is at the very least being contemplated. It's obviously going to get. As my kids used to say, worser. Of course it is. You don't need to do the arithmetic. And of course, whatever this board should do. Over the next few weeks or months or years. And later be, pardon the verb, trumped. By whatever the state may do with Broadway. Once Pandora is. On the road, you can't, mixing metaphors, you can't get Pandora back. Once you approve it. This, and the state decides, well, we think for all kinds of environmental and other use. Um, other uses, we think Broadway should be two lanes. Not four, then what do you do? You got a problem. We wouldn't be the first to experience it. Anybody goes over to Oarsley on the Astrid Avenue Bridge, as known for a generation. That that intersection, for example, is a nightmare. How do these nightmares happen? In all these different congestion zones, it comes from people acting, I think, in good faith. To commit more development. And, you know, I'm the first to support. Multifamily housing in Irvington. I I I haven't liked. The objections I read online and on Facebook and in the paper and elsewhere about NIMBYs that somehow um, we object. To. Affordable housing, large-scale housing. It's not my issue. I wouldn't want Saudi princes moving in um, to multifamily housing next year. It has nothing to do with that and and I really don't like. Uh, the accusations. My issue is simply, our issue is simply traffic and. I think frankly, I'm happy to see the issue at least debated by the experts. You guys are going to order up a traffic report? That's great. Maybe we'll do the same. The experts, I assume, will differ around the margins, but I don't think the numbers are going to lie and. I think that ought to be the focus of the board, in addition to, and maybe more important than ponds and retaining walls and trees and other stuff. Hey, let me make one other, I guess, maybe procedural point. Um. I I heard the applicant say at the beginning how solicitous. It has been of the neighbors. That this would be affected. I find that astonishing. It's preposterous. They would know this minimum amount of diligence. That we're deeply concerned about traffic and yet. The applicant doesn't come to the board with a traffic study. If I were advising. I if I meant what. They seem to say, I would come with a traffic study, at least making the best case for why the neighbors' concerns. Are either illegitimate or exaggerated, or at least to make the case, you know, traffic will get worse, but it's okay. Because of the larger benefit of multifamily homes that the trustees have said they wanted. That that would be an intellectually. Honest argument, but they don't come. With any of that evidence. And if they were concerned about the neighbors, they might have come, you know. Talk to us. Does such a thing happen? Yeah. W P B in the last round. Of of whack-a-mole. Came and talked. I think to other neighbors, but spent three hours in my backyard. Talking to me about my concerns, which I think they learned about by by some. Wise-ass letter I might have written to one of the local newspapers, but they came in good faith. They had a political agenda to hear out what my concerns were. I urged them to talk to other neighbors and I believe they did so. They also tried. Because they're not here to do a study. They're here, they were here to try to. Plan a development. They said, why don't you come up and see what we built up in Pleasantville? Why don't you at least see what we're in the business of doing apart from the traffic issue? They they made some effort. That I don't see um, present here. So I I sort of. Come and listen um, with a whole lot of skepticism and I hope. The board would have similar skepticism. If I could have one other point, it may be that our issue. Is with the trust, or it, part of our issue is with the trustees. I understand the trustees, as you pointed out, in good faith. Uh, rezoned whenever it was, two thousand nineteen?
Well, it was finally enacted in twenty twenty one. They worked on it since.
Of the course of many years and said this is a good idea and I get that and at some level, I may agree with it. But I think you have to account for changed circumstances. Back in twenty twenty one, there was not the traffic nightmare that we have now. And to contemplate this seriously, um, I think is contemplating, um. A nightmare we'll never get rid of in that quarter. Thank you.
Well, I've been here forty years.
How many?
Forty.
I'm a newcomer.
Okay, you're right. And 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 anecdotal information, while useful, we. You you we need the numbers. you you we need the numbers. They verify what the first gentleman said and they verify what you say anecdotally. It might even verify that it's worse. I don't I don't know. But when when one it 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 has to defend this legally, if not down the road, it it has to be a definitive numbers in a report, not not anecdotal.
And that's exactly why I said let the traffic police do their studies. I'm not suggesting that my anecdotal testimony is worth anything. I'm only saying I I can look outside and see that there's a problem that can't be improved by this situation. That's all.
Probably right. Can't be improved. Um, and that's why, in fact, the the trustees and powers that be had the forethought to have the initial traffic study to create a baseline of what we feel the traffic is today, the the traffic study that you referred to and the other gentleman referred to. So that we we have a baseline of what it is today. And 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 what will the new study uh, bring in addition to the baseline that's already been established by the foresight of those who decide.
To their credit, th- they approved this, but saying pending. They didn't use this language, but pending further information about traffic down the road, so long as this doesn't do X and Y.
Well, the trustees did us a favor and left it to us.
Whi- whi- which is why I'm which is why I'm missing the ballgame in town.
Okay, thank you very much. Mike, you had it.
Mary Anne. Let's just, um, we already know that they need a up to the curb cut, they need permission from the D O T and there's that process that went along that takes. Is it within our uh, power to say that we would not approve this unless there was a light there and in which case they would have to seek both follow a process?
Yeah.
Achieve that light?
That that could be an impossible. I don't think I don't think it's right to impose an impossible condition. It could be impossible. You know, that's the problem. Um, I I I think that you have you have discussion. I would say the board could have discussions with D O T um, to find out whether it's a possibility. I I kind of I'm a little bit doubtful, you know, since it's so close to these, close to other like, but you know who else would have a good idea of that is um, the person who's doing our traffic traffic study, um, um, Marissa, she's she's really knowledgeable about that stuff. So that's who I would talk to about that.
All right, because I understand you having turned, making a left turn out of out of that, making a turn out of Strawberry, making all the turns off of those.
Yeah, I know, because I know she specifically looked at um, uh, the uh, a light at Strawberry Lane and and that wasn't gonna work, but but whatever. I would talk to her. I would talk to her about it.
The the trick is to honk a lot. You honk a lot as you come out.
All right, I have another question to Mary Anne. Um, it was a a good point about uh, D O T decision on one lane, two lanes, whatever they're gonna do to bicycle lanes on Broadway. And and I, you know, we're gonna talk to D O T about the people who are doing that study. But what if what happens if they're they're not gonna decide if they're going to go for four lanes or two lanes for the next five years?
You know, I you will have to talk to, I can't answer that. You will have to talk to the traffic people.
The who people?
Traffic people, whoever are traffic consultants.
When they come on board, we'll we'll.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanna reference that one quick.
They're they're, excuse me, they're obviously maybe at the end. Yeah.
Uh, my name is Boris Rubenson. I live in seventeen Strawberry Lane. Uh, you're in, I've been here only thirty years. And uh, my house is directly uh, in that entrance. So I'm very uh, puzzled. What does it mean that that's an emergency entrance? Emergency for whom and for what and who uses it? Is it that if someone that lives in that residence is late for dinner, they're gonna use that lane so they can go in uh, through that emerg- so I don't quite understand what the emergency means. Uh, aside from that, I agree with all the things that all my friends have said. Thank you.
Thank you. There's two residents up there and 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 if if they provide us that, how are they gonna wind up parking in the parking garage instead of driving up to the to the residence and and leaving their car yet? Um, there shouldn't be any traffic unless there's a fire or a need for an ambulance from from my definition of emergency. Which may be totally different from someone else's point of view.
Unless there's a roadblock there, people will use the back door.
Yeah.
I would.
It doesn't go anywhere. Uh, anyway. Mike, did you have a question?
No.
Yeah.
No.
Mary Anne, on what he said, what anybody said so far. Okay. We have anybody else? Before we go to Zoom? Good night. No, there's a gentleman in the back. I figured by the time everybody else, you'll
Hi, David Zwybel, thirteen North Kaplan, Eric, Cut Net Street.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that.
David Zwybel, thirteen North Cut Net Street.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
The reason I didn't hear that because it didn't sound familiar up there.
I'm not an immediate neighbor, uh, but I am a part of the community that is favorable to uh, more housing in Irvington and multifamily housing. Uh, that said, uh, I think the the concept of the project is interesting to have some multifamily housing. And that's exactly what the B O T spent three to four years trying to figure out for that particular set of property. So it is not zoned for single family. And yet it's in a neighborhood of single family. So there is a contradiction there. Uh, and I think the village as a whole uh, seem to agree to have that contradiction and that's why we have the zoning. Uh, that said, uh, I can agree with um, everything that David Kaplan just spoke with. Uh, the issue is not multifamily housing. The issue is traffic. Uh, and uh, that is a problem. Uh, and uh, you know, Mary Anne is specifically not answering what's happening with uh, the state deciding whether Broadway is two lanes versus bike and bike lanes or stays the way it is. Uh, it may take a while, but the understanding seems to be there is a major, major push going on to change that Broadway Quarter. And the uh, to bet against that happening I think would be a a a poor bet, as David has suggested. Uh, it's uh, uh, it's been considered for a long time. There's a lot of people supporting it and talking about it, talking about bike lanes. We just spending how many millions of dollars to put a bike lane over to eighty seven? Uh, we're doing it and that's not because that's somebody's fancy idea. That's because the broader community has decided we want more bike lanes. Uh, and look what they're doing in New York City. It's coming up here and it's probably gonna come onto Broadway. Uh, and it's gonna go from Dobbs Ferry the whole way through to Tarrytown. Uh, so the yes, that is going to change patterns and right now it is, I it again, it doesn't take a traffic analyst to see that we are at rush hours with schools uh, close to failure at the main street light and at the high school light. Uh, on that issue of can we add a street light there? Well, hello, could you guys remember how long it took to get a street light at Dell's Lane?
I'm doing it. Donnie Mara took forever, filling his hair.
Exactly. Uh, I haven't been here forty years. I've been here thirty five, but
So many rookies.
Uh, uh, that battle went on for years. And here we are having a line of buses trying to turn left onto that and we can't get a red light there. So I don't think the state's going to, uh, high school is the same problem. Uh, the state's not gonna just pop around and say, yeah, I had another red light down on Broadway. Uh, that's uh, not going to be an easy ask. Uh, so uh, if a red light is a requirement, that's a non-starter, at least within the timeframe of somebody. I respect these people, they're business people. Uh, they've got to either have this project go or not have this project go in a certain time period and waiting for the state to decide about a red light or for the state to decide about two lanes versus four lanes is uh, is a problem. So uh, my statement is I am so glad to see that you guys are supporting what the village has determined through the Board of Trustees to ha- support multifamily housing. Uh, but this project's on first blush, looks like we really seriously got to look at the traffic issue.
Absolutely. And Mary Anne, that would not be unreasonable in in part of our request and charge to be upon consulting, look at the traffic two ways, one as a four-way, four-lane Route Nine and look at it as a two-lane route. See what the difference is uh, and then make a decision. And we can do.
Uh, the the one issue, if there is a movement forward with this at all, I find the idea of having a a uh, preschool uh, nursery school program uh, is would be a wonderful addition to the village. Uh, if they truly have this experience in New Jersey, I would ask if they have hard data on how many cars they have coming in, how many students fit into seventeen classrooms?
They'll suddenly come up. It's kind of basic stuff. It'll happen in chapter seven.
Great, and which will be added into the traffic.
The pickoff and drop off from the high school alone and then they add another drop off and pickoffs or something. It has to be looked at. I mean, anecdotally, one, because that's crazy, but we need the numbers to.
Absolutely.
You can't rely on uh, my assumption. You know what happens when you assume, right?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening. And thank you. Uh, Glenn Cashin, eighty-one North Broadway. So I'm right across the street from about where the proposed entryway would be. Um, and while I understand you're all here uh, to make your decisions uh, based on empirical evidence, I'm here to provide a gut check. Uh, being a resident uh, across the street from this. Um, and uh, all told, if I had been here uh, throughout all of my entire adult life, it'd be over fifty years. So I think I've got you all trumped, uh, perhaps. Um, anyway, um, you know, this a- as a matter of gut checking, um, I, you know, this is very much out of scale uh, with the neighborhood. Um, living on uh, North Broadway, it is residential. I know the, you know, during the the conversation, they talked a lot about Strawberry Lane and this is all brought up by um, the other folks. I'll just reiterate, um, you know, North Broadway is a neighborhood uh, as well, um, lots of residents. We've talked a couple of times about a traffic light. Uh, that would pretty much be a disaster for us. Um, folks on uh, the Broadway Corridor would have traffic backed up constantly in front of our houses. Um, I I really don't think that would work for us. Uh, unless you want to rezone our properties and we'll just build high-rise apartment buildings and reap the the rewards from uh, from that. Um, the other thing is they talked about a sidewalk. Um, that would be a sidewalk to nowhere. I I don't know what the point of that would be unless there's some connection to the future, uh, you know, rejiggering of the Broadway Corridor. Um, or perhaps they're thinking maybe that would be a bus stop, which would again be another uh, concern uh, of hours along North Broadway um, for traffic noise congestion. Um, I think the idea of the preschool, it's wonderful. They paint a nice picture and yes, it's probably needed. Um, however, I think the the idea of the preschool isn't that, you know, kids stay there all day long. I think that in and of itself would drive a lot of traffic in and out of that entrance um, all day long. Uh, and uh, this point, um, I think uh, miss as uh, Mr. Chafazada brought up earlier uh, the construction, but for me, living less than about seven hundred feet from uh, where the construction would be, uh, underground parking would uh, the the construction of an underground parking facility could potentially be a nightmare if they're gonna have to do a lot of blasting. Uh, I'm just not gonna have a basement left. My house will crumble. Um, I have firsthand experience in another area of the country I lived in uh, with that where the blasting occurred and of course, the developers you know, weren't going to acknowledge that blasting was gonna cause any kind of issue. Well, it did. It 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 cracked my basement wall. Uh, and my nice dry basement was never nice or dry again. And I would hate to see that happen to me or any of my neighbors. And on that note, I'd like to say thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to comment.
Thank you for your patience.
And we have we have bless, look, blessing, congratulations or record.
They should read them.
Excuse me?
The applicant should read them.
Oh, they're not alive effectively, right?
It's a limited window.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Paige, if if you're thinking about that, well, first of all, there shouldn't be a rocky, otherwise you won't be able to dig your pond. Um, yes, please, miss.
Yes. Hi, uh, my name is Asia Trapp. I'm at twenty Strawberry Lane. I promise to be uh, short. I don't promise to be coherent because it's ten thirty. I'm I'm tired and um, but I hope you can still get my point. Um, I think that rezoning this property um, at the time it was done made sense. But I don't think it makes sense any longer. The traffic is worsening and multi in multifamily, I can't think of um, any development of how many units could fit there to actually not make traffic disasters further. And to make a parallel with um, you know, New York City, people were referring, if you know, the governor of New York State today um, um, shelved the congestion pricing for New York City because it was uh, thought through thirty years very carefully and it was approved in twenty nineteen, but in twenty nineteen, New York City was a different place. It had no crime. It had a lot of people committing every day and things have changed and things have been changing in Irvington and um, we need more units, we need multifamily, but this this is not the right size for it, really. I think the core issue is that my board or the trustees need to rethink this rezoning and maybe consider another option uh, of how to the site needs to be further developed.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else uh, he- here in person would like to speak before we move on to the Zoom?
I would like to add just a couple of.
Oh, you didn't forget?
Come down, look to my elbow.
Look at the microphone because.
Yeah, so so a couple of points.
Reidentify yourself.
Tony Altmer, one Meadowbrook Road, uh, and a thirty-five year resident next week. So you know, I guess I get you some status here on this. Um, the the existing conditions study that was done by the village uh, specifically recommended in its conclusions that any future development in the zone uh, take into account um, the likely Broadway diet. So they were very, very specific about that because everybody knows it's coming. They also said that any kind of development in the zone should require there to be, uh, I I think they refer to it as a uh, you know, traffic impact study. Uh, a a study that accounts for uh, proposed future development, a background traffic uh, growth uh, study. So like a bunch of things that they recommended ought to be done because everybody recognizes the precarious position that we're in right now. Um, and as we said earlier, our our traffic engineers have already done the standard, um, using the regular traffic engineering manual uh, tra- trip generation analysis and has concluded that there's a substantial
uh tra- trip generation analysis and has concluded that there's a substantial number of almost four hundred and seventy trips, yeah. So that's one thing. Second thing I want to just point out is I don't understand how traffic is going to be able to access this property uh heading southbound on Broadway. Are they going to stop and turn into um in in and try to make a left turn across across the traffic lane? Or are they going to turn onto Meadowbrook Road or Sunnyside and try to go all the way around and come up Fargo and then try to make a left turn off of Fargo? That's insanity. The 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 traffic conditions, they they don't exist to allow for a uh uh an entryway onto this property from the north, absent a light. A light is never gonna happen. It'll take twenty years. Um there is no other way to mitigate the problem. You the the code says that unless, you know, a failing condition, unless it can be cured or mitigated, it it it's a nonstarter to any approval of any development. Yeah, you can do multifamily here, but it's subject to traffic, it's subject to all the other uh special concerns. This is a special permit. It's not allowed. This is not allowed as of right. They need to satisfy all of these conditions. They haven't satisfied any of them. Um and I don't think they're capable of being satisfied um absent some extraordinary changes that I don't think would ever come through, like like a traffic light there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh you raised a good point about heading south, a left-hand turn in uh instead of that that uh peace and point and you'll certainly point that out. And you 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 mentioned we need to do what the previous uh uh traffic people recommended if there was, or they're gonna be the same people.
Well, I'm just pointing out that, I mean, people are saying, well, maybe they should consider.
If we get the same people, they're gonna know what they said before, so. Anybody else present here that was?
I will resist the temptation to say one.
Probably forgot what you're.
It's uh Peter McCalleck from eleven Strawberry Lane. Not a question about traffic, but um when I was reviewing the code, I noticed that the applicant is supposed to provide a copy of their contract with the seller. And I was just wondering when we can expect that.
There you are. We'll have to check, see if you're correct.
Okay.
And if you're correct, it will be get done.
Uh I guess while I'm up here, one other quick question about the code and that's, um I believe that the MFO says uh that basically the multifamilies have to be three-family dwellings or or larger. So and pardon my ignorance, but if there are only two apartments in the the Maxon Mansion, does that need a variance because?
Probably not. Probably it would be all, it's part of one development.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Sarah, i- is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes, Marion Gruber.
How how many are there that are listening?
Okay.
I know, uh Toby, can you see what's on? I know, but how many are there? How many potentially?
Nine.
We'll work through.
Hopefully, they're just listening.
Do you have a curfew?
No. I wanted to get home by midnight so my car doesn't turn into a pumpkin.
I do. It's like the old American League.
Okay. Where?
Hey, who's on here?
Hi, uh can you hear me?
Yes, very clear.
Sorry, uh it's Walter Montgomery, not Marion Gruber. Marion Gruber is my wife. Um and we live at seven seven Strawberry Lane. Um I don't presume to speak for her, by the way, but we live right across from the Max, Maxon Field. So obviously, this proposal has some uh is of some consequence to to us. I have nothing original to say. Uh probably my feelings, my comments um um such as they are, um reflect what David Kaplan in particular said, my my more or less immediate neighbor uh to the west. But I I I guess I could say that perhaps my perspective um has some potential value. We've lived here for thirty-eight and a half years in Irvington. Um not in this house, but uh various places. And um the perspective comes from I having been on the planning board for, I think, six years, maybe a little more. Where we had traffic issues, to say the least, associated with various applications. Uh I dealt with traffic issues when I was on the Board of Trustees after that and long before that, when I was on the Board of Education. In addition, uh I've been on a sometime something called Ca- uh Traffic Commune Irvington, which was established about eight years ago and hasn't been very active lately, but has been involved pretty heavily with Larry Schofer and the Police Department in dealing with certain safety issues. And we had a major role in hiring a a police officer to deal with enforcement of uh traffic laws, especially speeding uh laws. And we've, the biggest issue we've we've failed to deal with is Route Nine. Uh with the exception that we did get a uh with with the help of the police and Larry, we did get a a um a speed uh uh monitor installed, a radar sign um on on nine as you head south. Um in any event, um the perspective is basically that I feel as though the 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 uh the 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 traffic safety issue and conjunct- and congestion issue are indeed very important. And to me, reflecting what I what I think David said, um they're 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 dispositive uh for all intents and purposes. Uh the um there's a real safety issue with with Route Nine, uh to say the least. Uh we've wanted a traffic light somewhere on Route Nine, close to Strawberry Lane, have not gotten it, of course. Um and as somebody said, it'd probably be at least twenty twenty years, which is probably beyond my lifetime before we get one, uh if we ever get one. But the congestion and the safety are real issues. Um there's no question about it and I don't know how um they can be managed successfully without some major changes along Route Nine. Uh in addition, as a resident of Strawberry Lane, I do worry um about, and my wife worries um about what somebody else addressed, that is, what's really gonna happen on Strawberry Lane despite people's best intentions, perhaps? Uh how how much construction equipment will be here, as well as how much noise and so forth? But the major concern still is Route Nine, uh traffic congestion and traffic safety. And I've offered my perspective from my experience in the village and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Walter. Good to hear from you, Dan. Stay well.
You too.
I have an answer to the question about about the contract. It it and and it's said as part of the site plan. Um in the event the applicant is not the um owner of record of the property, for you guys, this is two twenty-four sixty-nine, if you wanna look at it. Um all documents evidencing the applicant's interest therein included, but not limited to any option to purchase a contract of self, provided that the applicant can delete the purchase price. Do you, I mean, you essentially, they just wanna know that you, since you're not the owner, that you're uh the contract bendee, so so submit some of the content. But if you look at two twenty-four sixty-nine A six, that's where the requirement is.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Sarah?
Uh nobody's raising their hand to speak and there are no comments in the chat.
Anything else, Ed? Ed?
I'm good.
Doug? I know, Mary Ann?
Nothing to add, but I guess the board, um you might want to declare your intent to be lead agency because it's gonna hit. Or often, you're the lead agency automatically. You may not be. The Board of Trustees also has an action to take on this if they're in fact gonna ask for the extra five percent coverage. So if you declare your st- intend to be lead agency, then we'll, you know, I'll circulate that and then after thirty days, you know.
Are we preempting the trustees from being lead agency?
Well, if they want to object, they can object.
And supersede us.
I I I guarantee. I'd put money on it, but but in any event, that's why you declare your intent. And any other agency, if the Board of Trustees could say, yo, no, we wanna be lead agency and then it gets resolved.
Okay.
So I would do that and then um also.
Well, why don't we do one thing at a time?
Well, it's related.
Okay.
So you might wanna just do the one and 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 if you indicate that you wanna retain AKRF as consultants, I'll let the the Board of Trustees know and then they can authorize, you know, entering into a contest. But the way we have to find out whether they're interested, I thi- I think they would be, but um to start that ball rolling, because you'll want them on at the beginning of the process.
I should do two motions, one for the uh lead agency and one for, yeah.
To retain AKRF, yeah. Or to ask the trustees to retain AKRF.
Okay. All right, I make a motion to declare ourselves as lead agency for the purpose of secret. That's uh State Environmental Quality Review Act. So. Okay, now I make a motion to hire traffic uh planner, uh planners, which will include a traffic study. The name of the firm is.
Not just traffic planners, just the planners, because they would look at other issues as well, yeah.
Our motion to hire the planners uh for many issues, but concentrating on traffic. Uh and the name of the firm that we desire to have the trustees hire is.
AKRF.
A H K R.
A.
AK.
AKRF, Ellie King Rose.
AKRF. And where are they located?
White Plains.
There.
Well, they're, no, they're in a lot of places, but they have an office in White Plains.
Wait here, second, second, second.
I.
Cat, any opposed on either? No. Okay. So we got two two motions, one to hire this firm. Um and the other, we declare also, and you you do know, you need, like I mentioned it earlier, uh as a start to that process. Um long-form environmental assessment. Anything else going once? Going twice. Meeting of June fifth is closed. Thank you, everyone. It's been a long evening.
Uh Mr. Chair, is this, will this application be continued?
Okay, excuse me?
Would the occasion be continued to the July meeting? Yeah.
Yeah, you can you can um submit whatever you need to submit to uh to uh continue at the next meeting.
Thank you.
We threw a lot of information that we need and uh you can submit it all in one meeting or I mean, a little bit at a time. It's up to you. Okay?
Thank you.
Just get, there's a time limit as to when you can get on your agenda. Just make your, you need a time limit and I think it's two weeks, two Wednesdays before.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your presentation. Um and we look forward to future presentations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much as well.
It's all clear, right, what we talked about?
Yes.
Okay, I gave you a chance to say something. I said going once, going twice. Didn't hear anything. Okay.
Next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.